First, let me say welcome to everyone that's here. This is a regular meeting of the Yuba City City Council. This is an agendized meeting scheduled to start at 6:00. It's just three minutes after. If we could have a roll call, please.
Mayor Buckland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Councilmember Diball.
Here.
Councilmember Dukes.
Here.
Councilmember Gill.
Here. We'll have the invocation. That'll be done by Councilmember John Dukes, followed by Pledge of Allegiance. If I could get Atticus, a driver, is it? To lead us in the pledge following that invocation. Thank you. Everyone, please stand. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for your presence here tonight. We pray that you will be with us, that you will give us wisdom, give us direction, Lord, as we make the decisions that affect our citizens and those who work here in Yuba City. We pray that you will be with us this evening in your most holy name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just tap it once and it'll go green. Atticus is from Troop 6, I understand. So, thank you very much for leading us in that. Come on down, Janine. City Council has put together a proclamation for Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month for February of 2016. And let me just go through. I'll give you the proclamation. One in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical or emotional or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates of other types of violence affecting youth. High school students who experience physical violence in dating relationships are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at a greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships, engage in risky sexual behavior, unhealthy dieting behaviors, and experience disruption in normal development of self-esteem and body image. Only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse, and 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they do not know if it is one. The Establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities to raise community awareness, to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, John Buckland, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council proclaim that February 2016 is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and urge all agencies and businesses to work towards ending teen dating violence, then on the 16th day of February 2016. And if you'll give us a little bit about who you are and how you represent this.
So, my name is Janine Werner. I'm with Casa de Esperanza. We're a program that is in the Yuba Sutter area. We provide services to Sutter County, Calusa County, and Yuba County. We provide services to all victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse. I've been at Casa for working on 18 years. So, we appreciate the support of the council very much. This is only the first year that we've done this, actually, in asking for a proclamation. So, we very much appreciate your continued support.
And Casa de Esperanza, if you don't know where it's located, it's at Cooper and Forbes. It's an older Victorian-style house that is quite well-used. And Casa de Esperanza is actually, they have a plan to move forward with a future building and site probably not at that location, but it's certainly are in need of financial assistance to be able to get that program moving forward in the next few years to have a more adequate facility for resources in our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is the Chamber of Commerce Tourism Presentation. And I believe that Ms. Ricky Schaefer is going to help with that.
Gotcha. Good evening. I'm Ricky Schaefer. I'm the CEO of the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce and also Visit Yuba Sutter. And thank you Mayor Buckland and councilmembers for this opportunity to come and provide a progress update on the activities of the Visit Yuba Sutter efforts. Tonight, actually making the presentation will be our Director of Visitor Services, Brianna Struckmeyer. She has been with the chamber in this role as a full-time participant since May of 2016. She's made, oh, 2015. Wow, I'm just jumping right in there. She's made considerable progress in helping us to move this effort forward. We're extremely proud of what she's been able to accomplish, though we know we're just on the tip of everything that will be done. So, I will be here and available for Q and A as well. But with that, I'm going to bring up Brianna Struckmeyer and let her take you through what we've done through 2015.
So, again, thanks for having us. I know we're short on time, and there's a lot of people here, and there's a lot of presentations, so I'm going to make it very quick. That means I'm going to be doing a little bit of reading to speed things along, so bear with me. I did pass out some folders. There's some black folders with some Visit Yuba Sutter stickers on them. Just a few things in there, mostly for you to read after, but a few things to be aware of. Marketing on the left, T-Bid on the right. So, I'll go ahead and get this underway. Okay, so this year, we joined, we actually joined three associations this year, one being the California Travel Association. So, it's a statewide association that links us with other visitors bureaus, destination marketing organizations, convention of visitors bureaus for networking purposes, and regional support. The Central Valley Tourism Association is our regional network through Visit California. We're at the topmost region, and then it goes all the way down past Stockton and into Bakersfield and Joaquin Valley area. So, we represent kind of an agricultural hub in California. So, we work together to promote the region as a whole. And then California Watchable Wildlife. We work with them. They attend wildlife festivals, birding events, all over the state, and they promote Yuba Sutter outdoor recreational opportunities and visitor opportunities for us. Print advertising for the year, we have four publications that we went with. USA Today's Go Escape magazine. They feature, excuse me, it's a nationwide travel magazine. There's a few statistics up there on what they feature. USA Today Hunt and Fish magazine, really honing in there on a specific part of Yuba Sutter that we're well-known for. Again, a national publication, some really good percentage numbers on people and how far they're willing to travel and what they're willing to spend to find those destinations. Food and Travel Magazine, we had a great spread in Food and Travel, had some editorial that went with that. And Birdwatchers Digest, which we use to promote the California Swan Festival. Some free editorial that we received, which is really great. And as our program continues to grow, we're going to be able to see more and more of this. But these are just two quick things that we saw this year. Food and Travel Magazine, we had a two-page spread, which is included in your folder, that outlines a beautiful story that it tells for visitors about the Yuba Sutter area. And then in Notomus Magazine, actually, they did a full write-up on Marysville, which was really exciting. So, again, both counties really, both areas and cities really help each other. And then especially when it comes back to our heads on the beds, as we say, for our TOT money, that's, both areas really help each other. Website and social media. So, the biggest thing to come out of my eight months being with Visit Yuba Sutter was the rebranding of our website. So, we actually published February 3rd. So, it's been live for 14 days now, and our numbers are great so far already. So, much more interactive platform, really wonderful piece to kind of delve into, a lot more interactive, user-friendly. So, since in 14 days, we've actually seen 897 unique visitors to the website, and we're averaging four-page views per visitor. So, just a little bit of statistics for those of you on the past website. Let me see here. So, our bounce rate, the biggest thing between our old website and this new website, was really making an interactive platform. So, our bounce rate with our old website was 68%. It was a beautiful website, but it didn't have a whole lot of depth, and once you got to it, you quickly left it. Once we published the new website, we went from 22% in the first week to 18% in just the past week. So, we've absolutely dropped those bounce rate numbers, which is really exciting. We went from 32 unique visitors a day to 69 unique visitors a day, which is great. Again, doubling our visits. Our page view sessions doubled, and our average time on the site doubled. And this is, again, only 14 days of data for this website. So, very exciting. Social media. Last month, we reached 17,392 people through our Facebook page. And that's really where those numbers come in. It's not so much the followers. We do have 1,700 followers, but it's really that engagement and the reach factor. So, we had 2,700 people engaged, which means they're liking, sharing, commenting on our post, which is really great. Instagram, we're getting the local community involved. Instagram is a great tool to really use our locals as a great word-of-mouth tool for us. So, they love interacting, sharing their photos. We share their photos. We do two features a week, one being our Monday Memories. And that's where we put together a collage of residents' photos in the area. We tag them in it. They love it. They share it. And it's a really great way. Not to mention, the photography is beautiful. So, they really do a good job of showcasing our area in photos. The other that we do is our Weekend Update. So, every Thursday afternoon, about 4:00, we send out this wonderful list. It's our top five or six events that are happening throughout the area. We link them through Instagram to the business's Instagram page, should they have it. But when this uploads directly to Facebook, we go back through and we tag those businesses through Facebook. So, it's a great direct way for people to get information on events that are happening. And once they say, "Oh, I don't know, you know, what's going on with that," well, they can actually directly click on the event's original page, and then they can get more information. Our VIP visitor and swag bags, we brought those in last session. Those contain our visitor guides, our 99 Things to Do, our customized coupons, and various other area guides. We give them to groups traveling through the area. Anyone who comes through the chamber, we always have some on hand. So, just for numbers sake, this year alone, we gave out over 1,000 customized VIP visitor bags, which was phenomenal. Like I said, we always have them at the chamber on hand. So, should anyone come by, they're traveling through the area, visiting the area, looking to move here, just passing through, visiting family, we always have those on hand for them. And then we're working with the hotels to have those available to guesting at the hotel, you know, once they reach a certain criteria for why they're staying and how long they're staying for. Events, these are just Yuba, Visit Yuba Sutter-specific events. We have the annual Bike Poker Run and Wine Tasting Event. It's targeted mainly at visitors, but it's an event that really caps at 100 people. We really can't do any more than 100. But we really offer this elevated event in which people can come. This year, it's actually planned and accordingly a week before the Davis Century. So, it's a great way to promote a warm-up ride. So, 40-mile warm-up ride, come out to the Sutter Buttes, circle the Sutter Buttes, join us back at Cordy Wineries for some wine tasting. We have live music, wonderful catering. It's just a great event that showcases the area. This year, we were able to host a number of national, international food bloggers through Mir Glenn. They're a California specialty tomato producer, and they used us to host a dinner that they sponsored, actually, which was fantastic. And so, they brought in these food bloggers. We featured J. Higher Farms Blackberries, Apollo Olive Oil, Sutter Buttes Olive Oil, Balsamic. We featured Stevens Farmhouse Walnuts, as much Township Valley Farms Pesto. As many local products as we could, we featured in the meal, and we made sure that they got great recognition for that. And Cordy Winery was there also. So, while they didn't necessarily stay in the area, they took photos, they shared it through writing, and then we hope that they come back and write more about us. The Third Annual California Swan Festival, again, an event that was started in order to bring visitors to our area. It's a three-day event. I have some numbers coming up here on the success and what we were able to capture this year. And then this Visit Sacramento Fam Tour. So, we did a familiarization tour for the team at Visit Sacramento and Farm to Fork, which is encompassed in Visit Sacramento. So, we brought them here. We showed them some of our farms. We took them up into the foothills, brought them to wineries, and really started this great networking process in getting them to know our region, because they're going to be our greater promoters for the agricultural sect. Measurable overnight stays, this is something we're working on diligently right now, and so trying to figure out how to measure the amount of our progress and what we're doing and getting that back to the hotels and making sure that we're capturing those visitors and where they're staying. So, it's still a tool that's going to take a little bit of time. We had a Linda Convention come through this year. They booked 51 rooms, so that was a direct effect. And then we also, through local events, we were able to capture some night stays. We do have a few hotels that do track specifically why, you know, why visitors are there and what they're there for. But that's one hotel out of all of the hotels in Yuba City. So, we're working with the other hotels to figure out a really simple way for them to measure why the visitors are staying and to capture, you know, those unique events that we already know about, to pinpoint those weekends so that they can make sure we know which ones were visitors, which were just passing through. Okay, so back to the California Swan Festival. We had 127 unique out-of-town visitors, which means outside of Yuba and Sutter County, just captured through tour registration. So, that's the only way we can obviously know where they come from. When they come through the door, we don't know where they came from. But in our tour registration, we're able to capture their hometown and where they were from. So, out-of-state, which was really great, we saw 11 visitors from out-of-state, four from Oklahoma, which was really interesting, but great to kind of get that, a little bit of national travel here in Yuba Sutter. And then just a few numbers from other areas of the state. Partnering organizations. So, we, I've worked, worked hard to kind of get to know our local organizations and really dive in and figure out, you know, where the need is and where we can best help out here in the local community. So, obviously, working with our jurisdictions, City of Yuba City, Yuba County, the Yuba City Downtown Business Association, Focus on Marysville, America's Farm to Fork Capital is also Visit Sacramento, and then at the state level, Visit California. Funding. So, this year, thank you, Yuba City. We received $70,000 from the City of Yuba City, and it was great to have Yuba County come on board and support us. So, that was our year-end funding. And with, on the subject of funding, in order to ensure long-term funding of our program, we really appreciate what you guys have done in the last few years, but we know that it's something that's not stable long-term. And with any tourism bureau, it's, everyone's moved in the direction of these Tourism Business Improvement Districts. With tourism, there's so much planning in advance, and especially when it comes to advertising, it's so difficult. You can't plan month-to-month based on the money that you're going to have. And so, creating a stabilized infrastructure for your budget is so crucial to being able to have a long-term, successful program. So, that being said, we are well into exploring establishing a Tourism Business Improvement District, which we have talked about with you for quite a while. And we have some exciting news to present in that we've been, well, I'll just talk about this real quick. So, just looking at the map of California, T-Bid started in 1989, and we have 91-plus T-Bids in the state of California now. So, you can really see the map is totally closing in. Right above us, which were highlighted in yellow, right above us is Butte County, and they just passed theirs. So, we're about to be closed in around, and it's, so it's just a matter of time. It's something that we really want to stay on top of, and it's something that we're ready for now. So, we were able to collect, we started collecting support letters. So, in your packet there, you'll see on the right-hand side, behind the T-Bid information, we have signed letters of support in moving forward with this process from the Hampton Inn and Suites, the Bonanza Inn, and the Harkey House Bed and Breakfast. We do have verbal support, and Darren said he is willing to speak on behalf of Best Western, but we do have verbal support from the Best Western as well in Yuba City. So, we hope that this helps you feel more confident as you move forward in working with Civitas, as we all work with Civitas, but putting together some of these ongoing administration fees. So, we hope that this helps minimize the risk as we move forward. So, the next steps, as we kind of step into this now that we're ready, what we're going to do, and Darren and I have been working together on this, we're starting a small kickoff event, more of an informational event. This will be the first week of March, so it'll be inclusive of Yuba City, Yuba County, Sutter County, and the city of Marysville. All lodging properties currently paying into TOT will be invited to participate. We'll give a presentation. Darren, I'm sure will be there as a representative from the city, and then we'll also have a Civitas representative available for questions and answers. So, this is really time for the hotels and lodging properties to find out what's going on, what this all entails, and to ask any questions as we move forward. The next step is our official kickoff party, which we'll throw with Civitas, and that's where the committee will be established to move forward. So, this whole process takes about eight to nine months before it's actually established and before we have some money coming into the budget. So, there is going to be some interim time, and we'll talk to you guys about that later. In 2016, so if we get funded, when we get funded, and all this exciting stuff about how we can keep our program going, just a few things to look forward to. So, First Annual California Farm Festival. We went back to the drawing board, and we're currently working with the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau, and we will be putting together something this year. We don't have a date determined yet, but we will be putting together an event this year. We're modeling it after the Swan Festival, so it'll have a headquarters, but it will have field trips and workshops that leave from the festival headquarters that visit our farms, visit our wineries, visit our agricultural institutions, and get people out there and get their hands dirty. It's a great way for us to incorporate ourselves with Sacramento and being one of the, two of the six regions of Sacramento's Farm to Fork Capital. It's a great way for us to segue into that marketing. International Food Blockers Conference is actually coming to Sacramento this year, and we're looking to be a regional participant in their promotion and activities. Campbell Adult Center had reached out to us. We put in a bid for a three-day visitor tour, their senior center out of Livermore, and we were chosen. So, we'll have 55 of their seniors visiting us for three days at the end of April. They'll be staying at the Bonanza here in Yuba City, and then they'll be doing day trips. So, their particular time in Yuba City includes a small tour at Sun Suite, time to shop on Pluma Street, and a historic homes tour via bus that we'll be providing for them. The Where Rally is, this is the second year they've chosen to come back to Yuba City. They'll be at the Fairgrounds. It's an RV rally. It's a great way for us to have access to 300-plus people who love traveling. Most of them are retired, and we're going to encourage them to come back in their free time and continue to visit us and show them all the wonderful things we have to offer. Rob on the Road just contacted us. They're a PBS television series, and they're doing a feature on Highway 99. So, we're working with them on a five-minute segment while they'll be visiting three or four places, businesses, along the way, and we're working with them to make sure that they have the best experiences, getting them connected with the owners, so on and so forth. So, I'll let you know when that comes out. September is always Farm to Fork Month in Sacramento, so we'll be working this year to be a regional participant at their Farm to Fork Festival, something that City of Folsom and some of the other visitors bureaus in other regions have done, is come together to have one, instead of having producers from all over their areas and counties have their separate space all over the festival, they've come together and they've actually created one booth that features their region and then all of their producers inside of it. So, it's a great way to do that. So, we're already working with Sacramento to create that space at the Farm to Fork Festival for Yuba Sutter. And we're going to be looking into travel media shows this year. So, this is something we haven't done before, but really a great way for us to continue to be competitive in the space, great way for us to reach out to travel writers and media publications to get some more exposure. Regional and state involvement with tourism associations. So, again, getting more involved with our Visit California, getting more involved with our Central Valley Tourism Association, and making sure that we're in their annual publications, that they know we exist and that we're providing content to them. Future opportunities, local and regional tour itineraries. This is something that the Gold Country Region, which includes Placer County, Nevada County, and that Eldorado and that area, they started working together to put together these two-to-three-day local itineraries within their counties, but then expanding to a four-to-five-day regional tour itinerary where people can actually visit a region in multiple counties. So, it's a great thing for us to look at, working with Butte County, working with Yolo County, to put together some of our resources and get some multiple-day itineraries available for people. Providing information, so making sure that Visit Yuba Sutter is branded well, that we can be at our local events, providing information to visitors traveling through the area. We can also be at regional events and have a nice, beautiful marketing presence at regional events, and then also at state events like the State Fair. So, getting more involved in that, promoting ourselves up on larger stages. Visitor Center signage. So, we have our beautiful visitor center, but not many people know it's there. So, we definitely need to work on our signage, going both north and south on Highway 99, as well as some signage on Highway 20. Future opportunities, Ares is a travel agent that works with visitors bureaus to create widgets for booking rooms straight through their website. So, this is something we're looking into as well. So, you can see this example is Visit Lowdi, and you can see right on their homepage, you can book a room. You can get information straight from their homepage, which is a great tool for us to be able to use with our hoteliers and getting them to book. And it's also a great way for us to measure visitors who book straight through Visit Yuba Sutter. They can also book attractions and tour packages. So, the more we get into this, we can add things together and create a wonderful package. They can actually book it and create their own package online. Visit Yuba Sutter's Go Explore Team. So, this is something I've been working on as an idea concept. We haven't actually moved forward with anything yet until we figure out what's going on with our funding. But this is going to be a group of Yuba Sutter residents. They're all volunteers. I have a few, quite a few people that have already stepped forward and are interested. And what we'll be doing is actively engaging through various social media platforms and web outlets to promote live activity in Yuba Sutter. So, while events are happening, we'll have GoPros on the ground, we'll be recording, we'll be taking photos, there'll be various social media outlets that they'll be interacting with. So, it's a great way for us to have kind of a fun, interactive team, letting people know what's going on, when it's happening, and get people excited about it. So, just a few things, California Beer and Wine Festival, West Coast Falconry, Seek Festival, Millennium Kart Racing, Summer Stroll, all great avenues for promoting things that are happening that are live and exciting. And that's it. One more thing, actually, I want to touch on in your folder. We did get a letter recently that was submitted through Visit Sacramento from the Public Relations Manager. It's going to be on the left-hand side, and it really just promotes, again, and really drives home the idea that, you know, regional tourism is so important, and it's their way of reaching out and letting, well, it's our way of reaching out and letting you know, that they support us fully and that they see us as an asset to their regional marketing and that, just that, the idea that, especially in tourism, when we all work together, we can create a larger hub and a larger reason for people to come to the North State to see us and visit us. So, just a great support letter there, so that you know we're not alone in this. We definitely have some great support.
Any questions for Brianna?
To the mayor, not any questions, but just some points that I just want to make for yourselves, since the Chamber of Commerce is so near and dear to my heart. Great job from what it was a year ago as far as tourism and the direction that you guys are headed. Nice to see that you're going to do some Farm to Fork stuff, because I know in Sacramento, we've attended that, and they're very, very successful. Two things that I would definitely want to see, I know at one point in time, with a little bit later on, I'm sure you definitely want to come back and ask the city for some more money. And one of the things that we're going to take a look at, it's great to have the unique visitors and unique numbers, but we're going to look for measurement. Okay, what, you know, for that $70,000, does the city get in the bang for its buck? How much real dollars are being spent within the city of Yuba City? And one of the other things you mentioned on is partnership with the Farm Bureau. And I think it's very important that you don't forget that this is an agricultural community, and it is, from our logo, is Yuba City is the hub of California for agriculture. That, and I'm not sure if the chamber does or does have an ag committee, if they don't, I think it's very, very important that the Chamber of Commerce establish one. And the reason I say that, with agriculture being the backbone, and this is agriculture, it's very important that the Chamber of Commerce partner up, not only with Farm Bureau but other areas, and be always on the leading edge of whether it's a water shortage or pesticides or whatever the issues may be, because you've looked at the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce, the middle of Sacramento has one of the largest, strongest ag committees, and they partner up with the California Farm Bureau. And I think it's very important that, as you move forward, don't lose sight of that. So, great job.
Any other comments from members of council? Thank you very much. The energy is, it's exciting to see come from the chamber. I know that Yuba City, Marysville, Yuba County and Sutter County, Live Oak and Sutter are well-represented by the Chamber of Commerce. When people say that there's nothing to do here, I think that the residents, we ourselves are our best, or our worst marketing tool.
Absolutely.
The chamber is certainly trying to teach us a different way of marketing. What we do have here, our area and the region that we're living in, we live here for a reason. And much of that is... And much of that is what it really does have to offer that we overlook on a daily basis that many other people are more than willing to come here and visit our area. So I encourage you to continue the website, moving the website into a more interactive website, something we talked about years ago, and certainly is moving in that direction. So I applaud you on that. And the interaction with social media is invaluable for our area. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Brianna, and certainly to Ricky for all the leadership that you provide through the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a presentation on Sutter County Homeless Policy Statement. Presentation will be by Mr. Ed Smith.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes on your agenda this evening. Nice to see some of you. Hi, I'm Ed Smith. I am an interim employee of the County of Sutter at the moment, having retired there some years ago. I'm here this evening to speak with you about homeless programs. I know that you're no stranger to that. I know that the city of Yuba City puts about $85,000 a year into our community for various homeless services, for which the community is grateful. We very much appreciate it. What I have for you this evening is a policy statement that we're encouraging local governmental organizations, nonprofit organizations, churches and others to begin to support. The goal here is to begin to focus our efforts a little better on what we're doing with our homeless population. The homeless population exists here, and numbers are squishy, but there are probably 1,000 people sleeping outside tonight. There are another 500 or 600 certainly who are precariously housed. And to the extent that we can jointly focus a little better on those individuals, we might do better for our community. And we're asking that some of the matters of this policy be considered by you. We're asking for your support of it. I would tell you that the Sutter County Board of Supervisors supported it in late January. Yuba County Board will consider it in next week. And I have no idea where the city of Marysville is, but I haven't asked them. This policy is not restrictive. It doesn't say to an organization, you should do this, you shouldn't do that. It's a goal, the goal is to try to have some reduction of duplication of service. It is to try to focus on specific things. And if you look at some of the bullet points, we recognize that homelessness is a culmination of many things. There's a big difference between vagrancy and homelessness. There is an apparent growth of our homeless population. And so we're saying, let's target, first of all, children, women with children, and families, because they are the most likely to fall next into homelessness. So it's not only a humane question, but it's if we can prevent some growth, we got to start there. We recognize that there are lots of individuals who want nothing to do with us, and that's fine. You know, we're not going to solve a problem for somebody who's lived outside for 20 years. It's just not going to fall into our resource bank to be able to do that with any degree of big success. We are suggesting that all communities need some policies about the community. It's impossible to have a community in which you simply say people can camp anywhere they want and do anything they want to do. That doesn't work very well. I was reading in the San Francisco paper this weekend that they put over $200 million into their homeless program, and that's a lot of money in any given year, probably more than you guys have to contribute to the process. But we're asking for some support in a voluntary alliance of people and organizations to do work with the homeless. We're trying to put together from our side, from the county side, a small team of people who will go out and encounter those folks that you see homeless, need help, so forth, and find out who they are, assuming they'll talk to us. Maybe some of them we can give some assistance to. Maybe there are some benefited programs that we can connect them to. We're talking with folks at Hands of Hope about identify your five or six most difficult clients, maybe we can help with that. It's an organized effort to try to do things better. And we're asking you to join in into this soft alliance of groups to do that, and hopefully lead to better things for our community. You know, I'd be foolish if I tried to say to you, we'll solve this problem in our lifetime. This is a very complex, very expensive, social, economic, political problem that I don't have faith that we're going to solve, you know, so there are no homeless in our community. I think we can reduce the numbers. I think we can provide services to those who would most benefit from it, and I think we will find a number of people who will tell us to just go whistle. And for those folks, that's the way it is. We just don't have the resources to continue to contribute to whatever it is they want to do. So I would ask you if you would give consideration to supporting this concept and this idea and this very soft policy statement that can be changed at any time by any of the parties that want to do it. And we do appreciate all the things that you already do. I will mention that there is a homeless cleanup project coming up at the end of this month, 27th, down at, by Whittaker Hall, at that part of the River Bottoms area. And lots of organizations will be there contributing, and grateful to Levy District Number One for the things they're contributing, and to Recology and all of the others, and hopefully we can get some of the trash out of there and so forth. And many of the clients that live there are our most active helpers in doing that. So thank you very much for your time, and would request that you consider this and perhaps be able to support it.
To the Mayor. Ed Smith, it's good to see you back active like this in the community. Your history here has been fantastic, dealing especially with women and children. There's a legacy here for you, and we appreciate that. What has your been, inclusion in your involvement with the actual current homeless consortium and what they are doing? Have you attended any of their meetings to discuss any of this with them?
Absolutely, and I've attended three or four of their meetings. Actually, that was probably a mistake, because I'm chairing the cleanup on the 27th, and that wouldn't have happened if I hadn't been attending. Certainly met with the folks from Hands of Hope and the Salvation Army and our other natural partners. Haven't gone together with all of them yet, and hope to do that before my short tenure here is completed. But I'm looking at this as the beginning of the pathway, you know, for us to be able to be a little more organized, a little more on target to some of the things we need to do, and give an opportunity for further discussion.
As a, I haven't been able to attend the last few meetings, but the last four to five years, I've actually been personally involved in the homeless consortium and worked with them while I was at the county. We did not contribute money at this time, but we had all the resources, the employees that would attend from health and mental health, and as you know, they continue to do so. And five years ago, I can tell you, it was not organized in any way, shape or form. And what we have now is, while a lot of work still needs to happen, they're doing so much better. We have had cleanups in the past. Just about every year, we try to have one in the River Bottoms. And one of the main things I want people to realize is that this community does a great job at, when they identify the women and children at risk out there, as soon as they find out, there's a whole bunch of groups that get together and try to take care of them immediately. One of the groups that falls kind of by the wayside sometimes is at-risk teens in their, out of high school, and always in their early twenties. That is one group that is sometimes very difficult to serve, because, you know, you're out of school, you don't want people to know that you're hurting and things like that. Well, tough times, you know, you have to, you know, say, I need help. And just giving them the message that we're not going to be judgmental in any way, we're there to help you get through, you know, and gets established. And I just had a report from one of the very consistent NGO, non-government agencies that's helping out in the community, that the largest growing group is mature adults, 55 age and older, that are being at risk and not being able to. It's because of the jobs are no longer available, they're being not rehired, their skill sets are different, they're gone beyond them. And that's the largest group that they're dealing with now, is 55 and older. And so, you know, this has been something that's been close to me for many, many years, is homeless. And precariously housed is also one. Couch surfing, that's also considered homeless. You know, friends staying at your house because they have no place to live. And that's mostly where the older teens get missed, in the young twenties is that. So thank you for getting involved to solidify this even better than what we have. It's appreciated, and I'm going to try to make it back to those meetings in the Tuesday mornings.
I'll look forward to seeing you on the 27th. I think I have some gloves that'll help fit you.
I will be out of town on the 27th.
Mr. Dukes. To the Mayor.
Family responsibilities.
Thank you, Ed, for your report. I was happy to hear you distinguish the difference between homeless and vagrants, because I think so many times we use the term homeless, and as you know, homeless encompasses basically three different groups, which is people who are down on their luck, and maybe they've lost their job, they've lost their home, and they would like to become productive members of society once again. And that's where we have the services to help those people do that. Certainly the mental illness group, which the county needs to work harder on that element. And then, as you mentioned, the vagrants, who, that's lifestyle that they choose. At the city, we have enacted a no camping ordinance on public or private lands. We've enacted a no panhandling ordinance in the city. Does the county have plans to implement those same ordinances?
I've heard them discussed, but I'm not, you know, I know that they were speaking with county council about some of those things, but I'm not in a position to tell you specifically what they're doing with that.
Well, and I think that that's something that they need to take a look at, because the property down along the river is county-owned land, and so people look at it and say, well, why isn't the city doing something about it? It's not our jurisdiction. And so we need that continuity of ordinances to allow, to be able to enforce that. If I was a business and I was putting into the river, some of the things that are being put into the river, when they use them as restrooms and showers and all of that, I would be put out of business, and I would be fined by DWR for what I'm putting into the river, but yet we allow that to happen all the time. And you have these cleanups annually, and I applaud that. However, these people don't care. They're going to create another dump next year, because that's the way they live. They don't care about our community. And so the vagrants in this community, in my opinion, are not welcome. The other people, I fully support the programs to help them, but we need to get tough on the vagrants and say, we don't want you as a part of our community, because you're a parasite on our community, and it affects the quality of life for everybody who lives here. Thank you.
To the Mayor. Ed, I just want to say, great to see you. Thank you for the things that you're doing, especially in our community. For those of you that don't know Mr. Ed Smith, he's retired, worked for Sutter County Mental Health, and I don't think, you're probably a day that you're not retired. So this is something that's a passion, and I'm glad that somebody's doing it, and might as well be you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great to see you. Great job.
To the Mayor. Ed, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
I saw you a couple of months ago, and it was a great meeting, and I, we had spoke of doing programs like this. I'm very happy to see that you've come forth to work on a collaboration. I think with collaboration, it's a great way to reduce the repetitiveness of resources, the duplication of resources, to become more effective, to use our resources and our funding in a pathway to provide people who are homeless, truly homeless, the children, the families, giving them the avenues and providing them the avenues to become whole again. And that includes our mental health, that includes their groceries, their foods, a roof over their head, building if we have to, to create something so that they feel whole, and kids go to school more vibrant, more energized, so that they become successful in our society as they become older, and they can participate, and maybe turn around and do that for another family. So I thank you for your coming forth with this policy.
Well, you're most welcome. It's just the beginning of the effort.
Absolutely.
There are years to come. There are many, many, many good people in this community that are putting forth all kinds of effort.
Absolutely.
And we will find those people who want to participate in our community, who can deal with their illness or their circumstances and do better with.
Absolutely, absolutely. So thank you for coming.
You're most welcome. Thank you.
And Ed, before we let you go, you know, listening to some of the public criticism that has come out in recent, as this is presented to the supervisors, I will tell you that the most critical part of this is the language that looks at the safety net aspect. When we know and identify folks that are falling into a possible homeless condition, that's the time when they're most vulnerable, and we can reach out to them and get a safety net under these folks, and prop them up, get them into programs, and get them back on their feet. That probably will be the most successful component to this. The other components are going to be iffy, and I think that you address, as this statement moves forward and evolves over time, is looking at how do we minimize the numbers? This isn't about growing programs, this is about shrinking programs, this is about the consolidation of programs in which we bring the resources in, and we're able to minimize the impact of homelessness on our community. We will probably not rid our community of the vagrancy, because that has been existent for hundreds of years. But with that, thank you very, very much for your diligent work on this, and we will certainly review this in the near future.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of clarification, the agenda includes this as a presentation item, which has been done this evening. The staff report actually has a recommendation to adopt it. We can bring that back, just as a point of clarification, at a future meeting for formal adoption.
I think at a future date would be best, so we can go through the document itself and present it for adoption.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
While she's going up, I'd like to just make a comment to the Mayor. The $85,000 that is being mentioned that city's already doing is through Community Development Block Grants, Hand Up Ministry, Bridges to Housing, Central Valley Homeless Veterans, Hands of Hope, Society for St. Vincent de Paul, Sutter-Yuba Homeless Consortium, which is the umbrella that kind of tries to knit them, the loose groups together, and then the Salvation Army FSS Recovery Program. Those are where most of the funding does go officially. So there are the NGOs, our non-government agencies, that are in our community. These are the primary ones that we contribute to already. So want to make sure the students knew that, actually have names and identification of those. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward. If you can provide your name and.
My name, yes, my name is Ann Fletcher, and I, at this moment, I'm representing Bridges to Housing, and thank you for your grant donation. I read with great interest the Sutter County Area Homeless Policy Statement, as I was reading, something really caught my eye, and it is under the, homeless will not be allowed to reside in public parks, along riverbanks, or other secluded areas of the community. My issue is with the riverbanks. As you know, there is a population that has lived there, some for 20 years. My question to Ed and to the council members is, if you adopt this policy, where and how are you going to relocate those that live in the River Bottoms?
And I'll answer that on behalf of the council in general. First, the area of the River Bottoms that we're talking about is not within the city of Yuba City. That is an area that is county land. It is patrolled by the county, and so we don't have jurisdiction over that. But in its a general sense, that living within the River Bottom area, within the levees, is a dangerous and risky location, given rising waters, issues that occur within there, and certainly the pollution factors that happen on a daily basis. There are no restrooms, there are no garbage services that go down there. Most of the items are dispensed within the river, and that is not the appropriate thing to do with our waterway. thing to do with our waterways, uh, in our community. To answer, how do we get there? How, what do we provide for them? A location? Um, it has to be outside of that. We cannot allow them to move into our parklands, onto private property unless you invite them onto the private property and are providing the proper sanitary resources, uh, for those individuals. Will it be the decision of the people in Sutter County to possibly provide at some point facilities, uh, for the homeless? That's certainly a decision to be made by the greater population and, and how much money would be spent to build it, to provide that. Relocation monies are oftentimes utilized to get people back to their original homes. Um, in our area, we experience individuals come from, uh, many areas of the United States, Canada, and even Mexico to live in our, uh, community. Why? There's resources here. They know that, they speak of those resources throughout their network and they come here and, and, uh, set up shop. That happens in every community.
Well, you can understand my concern because we have funded, helped, uh, single women who have been living at the river bottoms and they have told stories about living in there, but still they have nowhere else to go. So that is, personally, that's my concern.
And, and we, I think we all understand, um, the complexity of that on, on families, on children, um, and certainly on women. And I, I think we need to move forward with plans through a policy that allows for the consolidation of, of services, that uses the money probably on a more efficient basis to provide services, whether it be interim housing, whether it be counseling services, what it might look like over a duration of time to build it, to provide, uh, the, for the needs of those that are truly homeless.
Well, I appreciate very much you allowing me to speak. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you very much for your interest. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Just provide us with your name.
Oh, my name is, uh, Ivy Condi. I'm a student, R, R, RVHS. I was wondering if the homeless back there or vagrants, as you might say, um, have you been down to the area toward the river?
Many of us frequent, uh, not for living conditions, but out of empathy and also trying to, to develop resources. Um, we're down there, we know what the, what the conditions are. Again, it's not within the jurisdiction of Yuba City, but because it's on our boundary and, and the inflow-outflow of those individuals coming into the city on the south end of, of the town, um, certainly impact neighborhoods, we look to, uh, do whatever we can to work in concert with the supervisors to come up with solutions, uh, for that area.
Um, I was addressing how they say that, like, they have, you know, a lot of waste going down there and a lot of, like, you know, people taking showers and going to the bathroom, but I believe that they don't really have a choice in otherwise. And it's, and I just, I believe that if we have given, we have like eighty thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, that they should have a more, like, a trash person coming in and out or just something that would help the water flow. I mean, like, the, the waste going through this and it, as she said, it, they've been there for twenty years, which means that this has always been a problem for about twenty years and it's barely getting addressed now. That's.
It's been, been addressed over that period of time. Uh, twenty years ago, roughly twenty years ago, um, there were small camps in that area right near what is considered to be Hilkens Lagoon. Um, there have been numerous crimes, there have been murders, there have been things that take place down there that are unmentionable in public, um, unless you're in a criminal trial seeing what happens, um, and has happened in the past. To continue to promote that or to go when the water rises and individuals are so intoxicated that they don't know to get out and yet they drowned because they can't find their way to, to safety as the water rises, which has happened on more than one occasion within the city of Yuba City, um, that shame on us as, as society. Are there resources? Can they go and take a shower some other place? You betcha there's a place called Hands of Hope, it's on Spiva Avenue. They can go there daily and take showers and, and get laundry done. There are people lined up at that facility to be able to do that. Uh, there are vehicles that come in with loads of laundry to come in and, and, and take care of their needs. There's clean clothes that are provided for them through many different resources within our community. Consolidation of services would mean that they don't have to float about the community, that they can go to one location and possibly get all of those resources more centralized to where they're staying at. And I think that that, over a period of time, is what we're talking about, the needs are in our community. And, and how that's done takes a greater voice than just the city council or the supervisors. It takes the community, it takes the, the, uh, churches, it takes all of the service groups, it takes everyone being, uh, on one page of basically music to play the same tune so things can happen in, in a very, um, constructive and productive manner to be able to provide for the, for the services of the individuals that cannot provide for themselves.
Okay, I work with a group called Trisha Life and we go down there to give them, uh, like, we donate blankets and jackets and all that type of stuff. Should we, are you suggesting that we stop doing that so they can stop the flow back there or, 'cause?
That, that's not a suggestion, uh, that I would even begin to make. What I'm saying is the consolidation of services, not humane, uh, or empathetic gifts to individuals where you feel that, that it's cold, it's thirty-five degrees outside, living in the river bottoms is not a comfortable location, uh, given that they're under tarps and, and very menial shelter and it's, this year has rained quite a bit. To give somebody the basic needs to survive, um, that's just, that's human nature that, that is reaching out, out of sheer kindness to be able to do that. Um, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm talking about the greater needs of the individuals to help move them in a process that, that provides a more safe and direct way for them to get into resources and for this community to be able to help provide those, uh, for those individuals.
To the mayor, make a comment. What this policy would mean is that the collaboration of resources that we have right now, some of them are being taken care of and some of them aren't. To bring a policy together is to bring bigger, better, more efficient policy or, um, resources so that we can take care of these individuals. It's a way to make it bigger and be able to provide more while we get folks established into their homes and bring them what they need so that they can get back on their feet. It's not to make the program so big and that it lasts forever, that, we, we don't want people on the street. But this policy is a beginning to say, let's bring all of our silo resources that we have, put them together in one big bucket and say, okay, where can we cut back because we have too much of this, but nothing of this? How can we put it together and how can we piece it all together to make those people whole again so that they can get back on their feet, go to school, go to work and be able to, uh, afford a living on their own? We just don't have the resources right now. People are doing everything, like you said, to give them jackets, socks, hats, um, you know, your, your bathroom supplies just to get through, but those are bandage situations right now. We are putting a Band-Aid on a very big si- situation that we have. So this is a start to say, let's bring everything that we have into one big bucket, see what we have, see what we need and how can we move forward? So I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you.
What you're doing is wonderful, don't stop. We just need to do more of it and put it all in one piece.
Okay, thank you for.
To the mayor. Go ahead. Um, one point I would like to make is that the river is a valuable asset to our community. But yet, I can't take my family down there and there's people here in this audience who can't take their family down there to enjoy the river because of the people who live down there and choose to do what they do. Uh, I made the comment earlier that they're parasites on our community and they truly are because they choose that lifestyle, many of them. Not all of them and that's why I made the distinction of the three different groups that we need to deal with. But I think this, uh, plan that's before us tonight to put our resources together makes a lot of sense instead of everybody doing something separately because we can probably do more by doing that. But we need to take back that asset of our community and make it available to all of our citizens, not just those people who choose to be vagrants, that they get to have the waterfront property in our community.
I was just saying that we should focus putting the people somewhere else that is more safe and more valuable than just clearing them out. That, that, that was the point I was saying.
To the mayor, I just wanna add two quick points to that. There are some people that, no matter what you do, they don't wanna move. That's exactly where they're gonna stay. So it becomes an issue of homelessness, short-term versus long-term. There are some that you can graduate out of there and put them in, uh, housing, help them find jobs, you know, so forth, different stages of it. But no matter what you do, how much you try, how much money we as a community put out there, it's not gonna be enough. So, and I think that's where perhaps Ms. Fletcher's talking about the fact is you can go ahead and put an ordinance in, but some people are still gonna live there. Uh, just to the north of town, we had Willow Park, created that nice downtown park, you could park your car down there, uh, you can go on a bike ride. And we tried putting some portable restrooms down there and I think we replaced three, four of them because people down there put them on fire. So it, it's just become a way, uh, of lifestyle for, for many of the folks. So.
One more comment here. Um, having been involved, Ann, with Ann and she knows, uh, last many years, um, I've actually taken in quite a few myself into my own home and found, um, permanent housing for them eventually, uh, some of them up to a year and a half at our house. Um, I know this personally and it's taking responsibility sometimes in risk, um, of the community and personally. Of course, good judgment, you have to be real careful and other people need to know and kinda help you out with that. Um, but then the consortium that we have now is, is a fantastic foundation. Um, what the policy I think we're gonna be working on here is trying to solidify an official policy, um, uh, dealing with these different groups that already are doing the homeless consortium, but actually putting it within the city government's policy to, um, officially support this direction or whatever we end up, uh, putting into place. You participate yourself in, in, uh, in helping the homeless and stuff. Um, but there are people that choose the, I'm gonna use the vagabond, the gypsy way of life and that's what they're comfortable with. Um, then there are some that like, the, the county, mental health issues, uh, that are out there, they're dealing with that. Um, the housing authority also has housing for some of those mental, um, uh, patients that we have gotten off the street and helped out. Um, there, a lot of funding has been utilized for these purposes. There just isn't enough money, there just isn't enough, um, um, places to put them where they will feel comfortable without getting, um, uh, uncomfortable themselves and, uh, just wanna, just strike out and go somewhere else or just, it's just their way of thinking. And having been dealing with this for, uh, many decades, um, I have a pretty good idea that there are so many different categories, you have to figure out who fits into what category, then deal with what they're doing and their needs are. So it's not as simple as just providing housing, providing this and that. You, you really have to, um, work at it and it's a continual, um, process. It, it ebbs and flows, one kinda group comes in and then they're taken care of, then another something else in the society happens and it, you, you never can nail it down because it always changes. So, and this is just to, uh, codify, um, an effort, um, officially within the, uh, the city, uh, policies of what's already going on in the community.
Thank you for letting me speak and clarifying with what I had to say.
And thank you very much for having.
Thank you for getting up there.
For having the courage first and second, um, River Valley High School is lucky to have a student like you, um, that has care and concern and certainly is willing to speak up and ask the questions. So, thank you very much. Moving forward with public communication, you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they're called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard under, uh, item number five, that's the appearance of interested citizens. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Madam Clerk, did we have any written requests?
No requests were received.
Moving on to number five, appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three Moving on to public hearing. Item number six, cellular, cellular water meters. This is a update city fee schedule presented by Mr. Ben Moody, our deputy public works director in our engineering department. Ben?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. All right, I have an easy one, no, no homeless or tourism dollars. Um, this is basically what I have before you is, is a consideration of transitioning to the use of cellular, um, water meters. And, uh, in order, in updating the fee to do so, it has to do, um, with evolving, um, from a radio read meter to, to a cellular water meter to, um, basically bringing the most cost-effective, um, way to read water meters long-term. Um, in order to do this, we'll have a public hearing, um, to consider the revised costs. Um, the costs are revised basically to, um, for one, the meter costs a little bit more and then also there's an upfront charge for the data use. So for ten years, this, um, this device, it, it's gonna send out a, a text message daily instead of, of the city having to, to go by, um, and manually read them with a, with a radio read function and it sends out info. And so for ten years, it gives us, um, a data use, to send out the, the data every, every day. And then it also, um, it, it puts it into analytical, kind of a, a nice software for the city and for water customers that allows, um, the city to really manage, um, their water use and what's going on with that meter. It gives us up day-to-day, um, info regarding, um, leak detection and which meters are reading and what meters are not reading. It also gives, um, water customers different tools to monitor their use, um, in, in different, different items. Um, currently there's approximately nineteen thousand plus meters in the city of Yuba City. And, and with this change, proposed change, we would, um, change the fee schedule to cap, recapture the costs to, to buy the meter and when a new house, um, or new development comes in, they would pay that new cost. Um, with that, I could answer any questions or open to the public hearing?
Initially, uh, any questions or clarification for Ben from the council?
Yeah. To the mayor. Well, go ahead first.
Um, the existing water meters, how will those transition to this over time and how long are we looking at before everything would be converted over to this type meter?
So currently we're on a, a, a process where we cycle through them about ten years. It's some, some, my understanding is up to maybe twelve, but there's a warranty period on that meter and a battery life on the radio meter. So we've been, um, crucified go through there a, and, and change those meters out. So with, I don't know the exact dates, but I know with the, the water rate study, we've, we've talked about this and, and the transition that any new meters that we're changing, we would change to this meter. And so, um, I don't, wouldn't anticipate it taking ten years, um, but possibly so.
Well, I understand that if a, a new home was being built, new service was being put in, that they would pay that fee. But as we change these out, how is that cost going to be recovered over time without increasing the rates to the customers?
And so that cost would be reflected in the proposed rates of the cost for maintenance with, with the new rate studies.
Thank you.
Yes, um, my question is regarding, uh, in the first sta-, uh, paragraph of the background, um, it says it's only about a cost of, uh, four thousand a month. I have a hard time believing that the employee, the vehicle and the computer equipment would only cost four thousand a month to collect, uh, data on nineteen thousand connections.
It, it's, um, you know, we didn't itemize it exactly. We, we took. We took an estimate based on two employees working, on the first month, first day of the month, they drive designated routes around the city of Uba City. So two days of every month, or one day of every month, two employees drive the designated routes and collect the data through computer software. And as you know, that cost is continually going up with employee costs and buying new equipment.
So they're able to reach every single one of those in those two, in that length of time?
Currently, the system, you don't have to drive every street, you drive a block, and so there's designated routes. And so on that day, they are able to collect all the meters in the city of Uba City. But this tool, basically, it's evolving to the cellular, where it sends a text message now every day. And so instead of waiting a month to get the information to show the difference from last month, you get it day-to-day. And so now we know if somebody moves out in the middle of the month, or if we know there's a leak going on that month, then we're, we get up-to-date information and can give it back to the customer and utilize it here at the city. So I agree with you, I believe that the cost for collecting the data will grow over time with employee costs and equipment and everything else.
Any other questions? So Ben, if you could, just for the public, explain the current meter, how it functions, and then this other meter and how it functions, just for clarification.
So I don't know if you can see this slide. So currently, there's a water meter, and it has a manual tab on there, and it goes out to a receiver, basically, that for ours that are existing, it's a radio frequency that goes out, it shoots out a distance of a couple blocks. And so there's equipment in the cars and vehicles, that they drive designated routes throughout the city of Uba City, that is within range of those meters. So we were able to capture all of those meters. And so on the first day of every month, we have, I believe, two employees, holidays, Sundays, Mondays, whatever day it is, they're driving to capture the data for that month. And so then that sets the bill date from the first of the month to the first of the next month, the first of that month. And so, and then they use that difference to calculate the bill. With this, instead of the meter sending to the equipment and the people driving, then going around back to the city to manage, it basically just sends a text message out, which isn't restricted by the, it isn't restricted by the distance and having somebody to collect it. It's basically, it's just like a phone, where it captures that and it sends it out daily. I don't know if that helps.
Okay, no, that, just as process, I wanted it to, some clarification on what the current process is and what it would do in the future. Okay, if we have no more questions for clarification from the council, we'll open this to a public hearing. And I do have a speaker card on this, Pat Miller would like to speak to this item. Anyone else that would like to speak to this can go and line up along the wall?
Okay, Mr. Moody's, Pat Miller, Sutter County Tax Payers Association. Mr. Moody did answer a couple of my questions as to when they would start changing the meters out within the city, but nothing was mentioned about the cost. And the staff report indicated that the property owner was going to pay the cost. And that would, for a new cellular meter, it would be $539 for a one-inch water pipe, and $942 for a two-inch. Now, I think that's an awful lot to ask the property owners to pay, when it's the city that wants to change the program to cellular from the radio-operated. I think you're going to have a lot of folks that are going to object to that, especially, you know, you've got a lot of low-income people that live in the city, you've got unemployed people, you've got retirees on fixed incomes, and that $539 for a residential property is a lot of money. So I would really ask you folks to reconsider this and see if you can't find a way to, for the city to pay for all or the majority portion of that replacement cost, because, you know, what you're doing now, okay, we're not, we don't have to pay that $539. If you put a new meter in, cellular, we're going to have to pay that. So I think it's cheaper, at least for the citizens, to leave it how it is, certainly. I think you're going to have a major opposition from the citizenry if you go this route. And our property taxes, we're planning an assessment to repair the levies and property taxes for services within the city, so please consider this very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for, I know Diana has stepped up to the hot seat now to answer some of the questions that you had, Mrs. Miller?
I have. So I just need to clarify, what's before you tonight is to alter the fee schedule for new services, new homes. That includes the actual meter itself, plus the cellular head. When we go to retrofit existing meters, we would just be changing out basically the head itself, and so the cost would not be the same as what they're, this is just for new construction, basically, new water services, where we have to install a brand-new meter. As part of the rate study process, you know, we've evaluated, to retrofit the entires, all the meters within the city, you're looking at about $700,000 a year for 10 years, is what you'd be looking at. And so that, that's a significant cost. It's something that's, you know, included in some of the options that were presented last Tuesday night as part of the rate study options. It's not in the two-year plan. It's not funded through the five-year Option 1 Plan. It would be funded through the five-year Option 2 Plan. So, you know, the item tonight is just to adjust the fee schedule for new water services. The retrofit of existing meters to cellular heads is a completely different discussion that, you know, we would have to discuss further with council.
So Diana, the question that I would have is the difference between the radio head and a cellular head, cost roughly?
It's approximately, Ben, do you have that broken down? So $150, and that includes 10 years' worth of them collecting the data, which we could have done that as a monthly, additional monthly cost, but we're opting to actually pay for it upfront, so that there's not a monthly cost to the city to collect that data.
Through the mayor. Diana, the comment was made that, you know, the city is charging this to the residents, but bottom line is, water is an enterprise that has to pay for itself. So we as, quote, "the city," can't just take and not charge this to one person and absorb that in the rates and pay for it for somebody else. It's not legal to do that, I presume.
Right, and with this, we're recovering 100% of our cost for that new water service.
Correct. So, thank you. You didn't take your whole three minutes, so we'll give you the last four and a half seconds.
The staff report says for new connections and replacement, so that, and it was stated that the property owner would pay that fee. So if you're going to do replacements, you better do them equally among all the property owners.
I see Diana just moved up on the sideline to answer that.
We've actually had some customers come forward requesting that we change out the meters, and it's more so for them to manage their water use, and we didn't have a mechanism to be able to charge them that cost to change it. And so with this, this gives us our ability to change out their meter and charge them when it's requested by the property owner.
So this is something we're going to impose on going around, just starting to change out 1,000 meters at a time?
That'll be a much larger project that will have to be programmed through the Capital Improvement Program, and then also included as part of the rate structure, the monthly bills.
So I need a clarification here as to what will be upgraded on the meters. Will some of it remain there, and we're just going to be replacing a part of it that's going to be the head part, or what's being replaced here, the whole meter, or what?
So for this fee schedule for the new services, it's a brand-new meter?
Correct, but I mean, we're going to be going into the future, then when we do do the replacement, is it a whole new meter, or just the head part of the meter?
It really, if we're talking about replacing a meter due to wear over time, that's replacing the entire meter. If we're just talking about where we're going to convert to cellular-
Okay.
-water meters, then that's just replacing the head, changing out the radio read head to a cellular head.
Because I just did some simple math, and if we were just to replace, let's just say, all of the radio head parts you're talking about for the, how many connection, 19,000 connections?
Over 19,000.
That's $3.8 million to replace. Okay? Now, if we were to replace all of those with just new and upgraded radio parts where that, or just to keep the maintenance going and replace the ones that are in there, that's only $600,000 over the same 10-year period.
Right, and, you know-
So there's a big discrepancy, so I'm just kind of curious as to whether this technology is really worth the effort between $3.8 million and $600,000. That's a big difference. So I'm having a little difficulty justifying some of the statements, and I'm taking into account the 160 instead of the 200 that's on this chart, that, you know, what you're saying for replacements and stuff. So that's a large, that's a huge difference that I'm having trouble justifying.
Okay, I believe that the staff was in the process of answering the question, so Diana?
So the, you know, the main benefit of the cellular, there's many benefits to the cellular water meters. Number one, it reduces the, or eliminates the need for city staff eventually to go out and read meters. Number two, it's a mechanism for our customers to be able to go online on a daily basis and look at their water usage. They can get leak detection notices almost instantaneously, whereas now, when we are reading meters, it gets processed, and it may be, by the time they get their bill or they get a leak detection notice, it could be, you know, a month to two months later. The other thing with the cellular read water meters, where we can get the information on a more frequent basis, it would allow us to then bill our customers in a more real-time basis. So right now, you know, you take the readings on the first of the month, that billing doesn't go out until the latter part of that month, and then the bills aren't, the payments aren't due until basically the middle of the next month, so you're always about a month and a half behind. And so for a customer to realize or want to make changes to their water usage, they're about a month and a half, month or two month and a half behind. So it gives them that real-time capability to look at their water usage and make changes, or, like I said, to look at it and see, do I have a leak? You know, if they show continual usage when they know they haven't had anything on, it gives them the ability to determine if they have a leak. In terms of the cost, I'd have to go through your numbers to see how you're calculating the 600,000 versus 3.7. When we're talking about replacing meters, you know, for instance, the Tierra Buena area, those meters are 10-plus years old at this point. One of the things that we're doing through the Water Loss Control Program is going out and bench-testing meters to see, are they still within the allowable tolerances? If there are meters that are still within the allowable tolerances, we're not going to replace them. We're only going to replace them once they get to a point that they're not within the allowable tolerances. But the changing to the cellular heads, it's not something that we're proposing immediately, it's something that's going to be a multi-year program, because we just don't have the funding to go out and change 19,000 meter heads. But as we move forward with installations for new services, we definitely think that we should move to this technology, because in the future, we expect to, long-term, go to this technology.
Thank you for the response, Diana. Did you have further questions on that?
Well, and I was, at that time, just basing upon the statement of $4,000 a month for the checking of it and stuff, and I actually bumped it up to $5,000 a month for 10 years, just to take into account the increase of costs for just the driving around. So when we're dealing with that, there is a large discrepancy in savings between that. But I do understand that replacing the heads, the radio ones and the cellular, there is a cost for replacing that, which is not nearly as much as the cellular one for the radio ones. And so it will be closer to probably a million and a half to $2 million versus the 3.8 million number. So I do know, but it's still, that's a large distance there that we just have to decide whether that real-time data is worthwhile for that cost, that's all.
And I can say, you know, we've done a pilot program with the cellular heads on some city parks, and then also some of the industrial accounts. What we found is the ability to be able to go in real-time and look at the water usage has not only changed how we're using the water, particularly irrigating the parks, but it's allowed us to find leaks. And so having that capability, not only does it help us save on the cost for the crews to go around and read the meters, but it also helps us to treat less water that's being lost through the system. And so when you're calculating the $4,000 a month, I think that the savings goes beyond that, because of the ability to pull up instantaneously and look at, where do you have leaks, or where do you have usage that you're not expecting?
And I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just pointing out some large financial differences with this decision. And yeah, from the meter to the home, definitely going to be able to find the leaks.
Mr. Mayor-
And that's important.
Just to offer something, at the $200 incremental cost between a cellular meter and a base meter, given the life of about 10 years estimated by Ms. Langley, works out to about a nickel a day for your average user as that incremental cost. And so the question is, what is that value added for a nickel a day in terms of water conservation, instantaneous feedback to the customers? And so that's a lot of it, and when meters go bad, it's not a matter of just replacing the head, it's just a matter of replacing the whole meter. It's just a question of whether you'd go with a radio read or cellular. Staff, from our perspective, the reason this is brought before you, we're always trying to look at what we can do from a value-added side for our customers to give them better service, and this was identified as a good upgrade in service. Thank you.
Thank you for that input. Another citizen wants to speak to this during the public hearing, Stephanie Rusino, please.
Hi. Thank you, Stan, for looking out for our fiscal interests, and I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Craig or value-added. However, all the Department of Homeland Security talks, all of this stuff about EMPs, I have a question. If there's a cellular out there, it could be manipulated, at what cost? We already know that what happens in cellular towers and cellular technology during disasters, we didn't consider that cost. Who's making all the money on the cellular stuff? Didn't go out to bid, it's just one company. And just because this technology exists now, doesn't mean we should use and upgrade it now. How do we know there's not one coming out in two months? How do we know that Cal Poly, or Stanford, Silicon Valley doesn't come out with something better? For instance, we know, okay, you talk about real-time, how much money, how many gallons have you discovered in leaks? Will it really benefit? What if some terrorists with a little computer, and we know they can do this, manipulates our entire water supply? Mess up the data, just one radio frequencies, for instance, you can get a little Boufag radio and use it on a two-meter band for like $35. There's no more cost on it. It's radio, you've got your repeater towers. Cellular, you always know that there's upgrades, and there's always going to be problems with it. And I have to ask myself, who is getting the most benefit for that? The company that's selling it to us? I don't think it's us, we already have something that works. Green alone, okay, you can say, you know, this will create a lot of waste. Environmentalists can come up with all kinds of arguments on that, but mine is, think about it in disasters, the different technologies, and think of ways that people can manipulate it, especially the terrorists. We live in that society. And we need to consider it all, not just the money that we're going to be spending extra, but are we going to be safe? Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Sir, if you'd just give us your name?
My name's Dale McDowell. On the percentages and the cost- Um, on the, on the percentages and, and, and the cost, um, I don't know. On this meter, is this going to still have a head that I can read? Or is it going to be something that you read? Over here in City Hall someplace where you pick the numbers and, and do I, can I see it? Right now, the meter I have, I can go out and read it. I read it every day, I know exactly how much water I, I use. So, uh, the, so the cost of that, I, you say, well, maybe it'll be a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, I, uh, this is my second time to uh, a city council in, in the chambers. Well, at the time before here, I just got, uh, we heard percentages of thirty-three percent increase on water. And when I go home and figure it out, why it comes out uh, for a unit of water on this, on the new schedule, that's a ninety-three percent increase. And at the end of the five-year period is uh, on uh, Plan Two, I think, was the one that, uh, we think, that's a hundred and ninety-five percent increase over this. And now you want to change the meter, charge me more money? And so my question is, is, does the meter, does it have a face on it that I can go read? Or is it something that you're going to read in the office?
It has both.
Huh?
It has both.
It has both?
It has a face.
Oh, okay, okay. I.
I like the one you have now.
Say, same, same kind of meter, like I go out and read the tents and I see everything on, on the meter.
The wires that come off the head that go to the.
I have.
Changes the radius.
Yeah, okay. But I prefer, you know, if I didn't want it to go to a meter that I can't see.
I, I fully understand that, when I fill up my car with gas.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to see how much I just got done putting in, you know?
Exactly.
And, and I will say, you know, in response to some of the comments, uh, when my father-in-law was alive, he had water coming from uh, BVID up in Grass Valley, it's a ditch, uh, and he turned his water on with a valve. That was fail-proof. Um, but I would tell you that, that uh, it wasn't the most secure system that was ever or reliable system because only when there was water in the ditch did you get any irrigation, so.
Yeah.
But I, I appreciate uh, what, what your questions were and certainly, I think Ben answered those.
Okay.
You still get to look at the tents.
Okay, thank you.
Again, as clarification, this is a go-forward process, this isn't going back. There is no money to go back and do any ret, type of retro um, fitting of this. This is a new developments going forward and at request, replacing uh, meters that individuals may uh, ask the city to, to replace or a failed meter system that needed, uh, because it's, it's outdated, needs to be replaced. Any other questions for Ben? Any other members of the public wish to speak to this? I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action.
On this specific matter as described and recommended, um, I can support that uh, for the, uh, the purposes that it is stated for, but I would really like to get some more defined numbers as to um, some of the questions that I have going into the future, the costs and, you know, uh, for uh, retroing, uh, what, what are going to be done in the future for the next ten, ten or twelve years. So I'll be um, coming in to just at least sit and get some more numbers for me to be more comfortable with the future action we're going to have to be doing and decisions, so uh, rather than that, uh, for this purpose, I will um, actually uh, move the recommendation for um, adopt the resolution authorizing the finance department to update the city fee schedule for the costs associated with a revised city standard type cellular water meter.
So we have a motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds as though there were none. Ben put me down for the first one because I want to set up an alert system for when my wife leaves the hose on in the backyard, that I'll be able to go out at midnight and shut it off.
And, and we will work with those, uh, come back with some numbers. Um, with some of those, as Diana mentioned, are, are intangible about the leaks, trying to determine that, but we will work to get you something.
We'll be moving on to item number seven, the grading erosion and sediment control ordinance uh, presented by Ben. Ben, you thought the first one was going to be easy, let's see where this one goes.
All right, the item before you is the second reading for the um, establishing a grading ordinance in the city of Uba City. And with that, um, to establish a fee for um, providing a plan check and inspection of the grading permit required through the grading ordinance to conduct a public hearing for the considers, consideration to establish that plan check and inspection fee. The city has um, has proposed a grading ordinance to control earthquake grading activities through a permit process to comply with state permit requirements. Um, under, the, the city is required under a stormwater permit through the state to um, monitor grading activities and, and make sure that runoff um, doesn't affect um, any of our rivers or outlets. Through this grading permit that we're going to establish with the proposed ordinance is, is any activities larger than fifty cubic yards, um, permit will require plans addressing proposed grading, drainage and erosion control. There's exempt, there's exempt, um, obviously every grading activity is not required a permit. Um, the exemptions include sim, single-family residences, grading work under a half acre, ag, agriculture-related activities, minor construction projects and emergency work. The proposed fee for the project, it really breaks out an existing cost that was, was previously being captured under um, a building permit. So that grading work used to be um, included in the grading, in the building permit fee. And so with this, with establishing the grading permit, it, it breaks that fee that we were charging out for, for a separate fee and inspection. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ben? Seeing none, we're going to open this to the public hearing. Any member of the public wishes to speak on this item, please do so now. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for.
To the mayor, I'll go ahead and make uh, staff's recommendation to approve items A and B.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Ben. Moving on to item number eight under ordinance, stormwater management discharge control ordinance update.
All right, this is the um, the second ordinance that we're trying to propose and implement tonight. And this is tied directly to the grading permit. The city is, is basically trying to update our stormwater management discharge control ordinance to comply with the state requirements. Um, with this, the big changes that are, that are coming, that are mandated through the state are the establishment of an erosion and sediment control plan, a runoff control plan. So, so basically before they do the work, they're going to need to provide a, a plan and a sediment control plan, how they're going to do the work without providing runoff. And then they're going to have to do a post um, plan to see how long-term that new facility doesn't cause discharge issues. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the stormwater ordinance.
Any questions of Ben? Seeing none.
To the mayor, I'll go ahead and move staff's recommendation.
Second. Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Ben.
Thank you.
Your, your job is done tonight. Moving on to the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff or the public request specific items be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action.
So moved.
Second. We have um.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I do see a, a speaker card wanting item number eleven removed.
Mr. Mayor, you missed it.
Well, I had it written down and I, I just simply missed Pat.
We're, we're also going to need to discuss item ten, just for a minor clarification to the agreement.
Well, we're going to pull number ten and eleven then.
Would you like a motion for uh?
Item number nine.
Item number nine?
Let's move on nine.
Okay, make a motion for nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on just item number nine, which is the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving to number ten, that was removed for some clarification.
Just one quick item on the purchase and sell agreement, um, item three point O C, I believe it is, where it talks about close of escrow. It had a date in there which was incorrect, it said February first of twenty sixteen, which is obviously already passed. Uh, we are recommending that that changes till thirty days um, after the agreement is executed.
Any, any other discussion on that? Action from council?
Move to approve the item with the change in language as recommended by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One also passes, we'll be moving on to number eleven. It's um, CalPERS employer, employer-paid member contribution resolutions. Wishing to speak is Pat Miller. Pat.
Good evening again. You know, I read the staff report twice, couldn't figure out what it was saying. Had my husband read it, he couldn't figure out what it was saying, so we'd just like an explanation of what it is, please.
And we will have Natalie come up so we don't make some uh, half ill-attempted version and confuse the issue more.
Well, hopefully I will not confuse it more.
No, if, if I tried to make that.
Good evening. Um, the purpose of this uh, staff report was mainly, mainly a cleanup item. Um, these are already terms that are outlined in the current MOU or LOUs. Um, basically, you know, from the thirty thousand foot view, we have um, diff, uh, two ways that employees are paying towards their PERS. Uh, one group is paying the member contribution and um, another section is paying uh, the employer contribution. Um, and this is so the city continues to pay and report the value of PERS. But we, they are paying that value, so for example, let me use an example. So um, if we have a member who's a miscellaneous member, who's a member of our mid-manager group, their um, member share is eight percent. The city is still paying the member share on their behalf and reporting that value, but we're to take, but the employee is paying that eight percent of the uh, agency, the city cost. So it's just another way that the employee is paying their member share. It's just a different, it's a different mechanism and it's called cost sharing, um, and it's uh, requires a contract amendment. And these are all terms that were negotiated as part of the bargaining unit contracts. I, yeah, we can talk afterwards if that helps, yeah, or tomorrow.
And, and also, uh, Pat, for, for other clarification, state law uh, dictates that there be current resolutions dealing with it and this is all part of some cleanup legislation that happened uh, in relation to um, CalPERS and probably goes back almost, almost ten years. Yeah. Doesn't add anything, it's just, it's language for CalPERS.
To the mayor.
Go ahead.
Move to approve item number eleven.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to, to take a, um, a liberty here under general items because everyone else here is staff, um, with the exception of item number sixteen where Mr. Randy Page is, is uh, here and present to answer any questions. I'd like to move item number sixteen, establishment of the summer intern program uh, to the forefront of the general items.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Darren Gill, your Economic Growth and Public Affairs Manager. Uh, this evening, it's my opportunity to present to you um, information about a summer at City Hall uh, intern program. And uh, with me this evening is Randy Page, who is the Director of Regional Occupational um, Programs and Career and Technical Education at the Sutter County Office of Education. Um, this past year, Councilmember Didball and Councilmember Cleveland attended the League of California Cities annual conference and we heard a presentation on the city of Sacramento's Summer at City Hall program. It's a program to bring youth uh, in, uh, and, and get them active, active into our local community. It's also trying to provide the tools of our upcoming workforce um, to have those essential skills they need to succeed in life. Um, over the past couple of months, the city, uh, the Uba City Unified School District and the Sutter County Os, Office of Education have worked together uh, to uh, at least move forward the id, idea of having a summer at City Hall program. Uh, the three goals is to provide youth with more opportunities, um, foster interest and provide the tools to be as, uh, a civically engaged uh, uh, youth and teach youth how to use their voice to advocate for themselves and others. I would also like to tie a direct correlation between this program and our economic development work plan, which talks about working, um, working and building the foundation of our, of our youth in our community. The number one uh, way that we can improve um, the economic development's future of our community is by ensuring we have a strong um, up, up and coming workforce. This program will cost money, uh, that's where I'd like to turn over to Randy Page, who has uh, has a funding mechanism and a grant that they've received to see this program be successful at least for two years. Randy.
Good evening and thank you for moving me up, um, although it was a fascinating meeting and I would gladly sat through the next four items. But I am excited to talk about this one, uh, in particular. Our uh, county office uh, is a fiscal agent for eight million dollar four-county grant that we applied through the California Career Pathways Trust uh, a year ago. We were one of twenty uh, applicants out of one ninety-seven that were funded in the program and one of the um, brownie points, if you will, was to include uh, a citizenship or government component in this grant. And what that does is it ties together not only all of the hands-on skills uh, that our students are learning uh, as a result of this grant, advanced manufacturing, agriculture, uh, IT, uh, the health services fields, culinary, uh, and there's three or four others that um, slipped my mind right now, but uh, just suffice it to say that we felt like uh, the softer skills, you know, and they're, I don't mean it to sound soft because it, when you say advocate, that indicates that uh, a student is learning how to uh, argue a point, become a leader uh, in, in their school, on their work site. All those things are what employers look, look for. I uh, had a, a group of young people from East Nicholas attend a um, field trip at Frank M. Booth this morning and all that they heard was leadership, 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 leadership from the employees, Larry Booth, uh, anyone that got up to talk, talked about uh, the core values of that company, which are no different than the core values of most of the companies in our area. And so we felt um, uh, uh, Councilwoman Didball and I, that this is a great, this is a great idea, uh, and I think it's something that we can get going fairly quickly. And so uh, we've contacted Uba City Unified School District and what we'd like to do is create a summer school program where the students actually receive credit as well as the opportunity to job shadow and mentor on a rotating basis so that they learn how their city government works. And that's not only going to make them better employees, it's going to make them better tax-paying employees later on, um, when they're, you know, come to meetings like this and, and can ask intelligent questions about how their taxes are being spent. Um, we're really excited about this, it's still, uh, we're, we're still looking at curricula, uh, there's some tried and true programs out there from Elk Grove and other areas in Sacramento and we're going to be looking at some of those, uh, and we're going to be recruiting the kids from uh, Uba City Unified School District and we're going to shoot for thirty. Um, it's kind of ambitious for the first time around, but uh, we, we, we set the bar high when we wrote the grant and uh, so we, we better be able to jump over it. So with that, um, I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Mr. Page?
No questions, but thank you Randy for uh, moving forward with uh, Councilwoman Didball. I'll have to actually completely defer all the effort to her because uh, um, it's her passion is the youth, I have other passions that I work for in the community and she's pretty, she was the one that put legs to this and you, so um, I compliment her on her efforts.
And I can echo that by saying, my first email was that we're going to meet tomorrow at 5:00 at Starbucks, and we were sitting down jotting ideas down the very next day, and her passion was evident. And we certainly share that passion with her and are dedicated to making this program a success. There is a possibility that we'd be able to fund the program for a third year. It's looking very much like we're going to be able to do that. We've eliminated some vendors that couldn't quite cut the muster as far as we were concerned. We wanted the funding for our program to go to schools and kids, and I'm proud to say 96% of our funding does go to schools. 4% goes for the administration of the program, and that includes all the money that we gave to Yuba College, which was well over $1 million. So, this is really a great community effort, and I think you're all going to be very proud of the results in four years when we're done.
I just want to add, thank you very much. It is a true passion of mine, and I see kids in our room right now and hope to see you in the future program. The goal is to start this summer, so that's why there's no procrastination. The meeting is tomorrow at 5:00. We've been moving forward with this at a very, very fast pace. So, and we're hoping that as the program kicks off that we will be speaking at the League of Cities this coming year about our program, so you can be a participant of that. And I thank everybody for jumping in and helping and making it happen, so.
And we do plan to replicate this in the city of Marysville and other jurisdictions in the four counties. We're currently working right now with the Gold Sox baseball team to set up a sports management program that would benefit the students of Marysville High School, and they are thrilled about the opportunity to do that, and that's on a fast track as well. So, that may take a little bit longer. It might be next year before we get that off the ground, but this is a priority for us right now.
To the mayor.
I think it's very important. Thank you very much, Randy. I think it's very important for us as a city that when we do got this grant for two years and possibly three years, that we're able to line up some of the students that want to participate with the departments that would best fit them in the sense that we put them in with either it's planning or economic development, that we don't put them in the clerical parts of saying, "We need your help here, and we need your help there," because this is really for the kids to learn career pathing. Is this what they want to do? And maybe be able to apply this year and come back next year, because I think one of the great success stories for us and our entire executive group is perhaps Arnaldo, who went through a similar program where he was, and guess what? He's the head of our planning department here. So, we would love to have you students come back, see this is what you want to do, job shadow, go to school. We want you to come back to our community and be those leaders that we need, because very often that when we have positions opening, we have a lot of people coming from outside of the area, and we would love to have what we call homegrown folks such as yourselves. So, this is an opportunity for yourselves to apply, get the word out to your friends that there is jobs not only here in Yuba City, but perhaps in Marysville, perhaps with the Gold Sox, if that's what you guys want to do. It's a great, great opportunity for the city. It's a great opportunity for yourself and great opportunity for the Office School of Education and Councilwoman Didball in Cleveland for them both spearheading this thing.
And in the youth that are here, we have a number of pathways programs, and you should really take advantage of your counseling staff at your high school to find out exactly what those are at your particular site.
Yeah. I was just going to add that even in Sacramento, my Sacramento office, we actually have college students that come in job shadow, and we do pair them up with an area that they are interested in pursuing. So, that's the whole idea is to, you know, it might end up being a career that you're really passionate about, or it might end up being, "Oh, my gosh, I don't want to do this. What am I thinking?" And it might lead you into a direction that you're going to be more passionate about. So, it'll be a great experience.
And I couldn't agree with Councilman Gill more that we do want to find out what that passion is that that student has. And sometimes that, you know, means tripping a couple of times, but success story after success story I see in ROP and all the other federal programs and state programs I've been involved with for 32 years now, so.
We'll go through the application process, so every student who is interested will complete an application process, will review the applications, and then you will come in for an interview with myself and whatever panel that we decide on. So, you will be selected depending on where we can place you.
Okay.
Paige, I just want to thank you for applying and getting this grant for our community. We've talked about this for some time now, and I just thank you for the effort that you put in, not only at the ROP program, but the pathways and the work that you do to bring these kind of projects and the dollars to our community to be able to do this. And thank you.
I appreciate it, and it's my pleasure to serve my community. Thank you.
Are they going to be appropriate this time for the council to take actual action and if we're going to support this program?
Through the mayor. I'd like to recommend supporting this item and move a motion to approve it.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Randy.
Thank you very much.
You can go home now.
You said it was an intriguing meeting. You might as well stay for the other items.
All right, we're going to backtrack a little bit now. Back to item number 12, Yuba City Firefighters Local 3793 Memorandum of Understanding, presented by Natalie, our Human Resources Director.
Good evening again. I am very pleased to be up here presenting this agreement this evening. This has a long history. I'm going to shorten it for you. The FIRE MOU amendment expired in June of 2014. The first round of negotiations began in early 2014. During this round of negotiations, the cities and the fires' positions were fundamentally different with respect to economic issues and operational efficiencies. As a result of these differences, the city imposed its last, best, and final offer in January of 2015. Some of the imposition in terms included employees paying the entire employee contribution towards PERS, that is, the member share. It was 9%. Elimination of the furlough program, capping health care at the 2014 amount, and staffing according to the ICMA recommendations. After the imposition, it was important for the city to get back to the negotiations table with FIRE. Negotiations resumed on August 18th with the FIRE Union retaining a chief negotiator. His name is Chuck Flescher. He's with Mistegney, and we worked really hard with him at the beginning of January. The FIRE Union really pulled together with the city of some long nights, but we were successful during that push, and the terms were ratified by the FIRE Union on January 7th. Here are some of the MOU terms. I'd just like to point out a few of them. The agreement expires June 30th, 2017. We have an FLSA provision with sick and vacation not counting as timed work. It's basically an overhaul of the FLSA language. 2% flat rate salary increase. It does have the one-time non-perceval distribution of 1,500, and it transitions in employees paying 20% of the medical premium. In addition to these terms, there were terms from the imposition that remained in effect. There is, of course, a fiscal impact to this contract. It is up on the screen now. At this time, I would like to thank Drew Crawford for being here tonight. He's over there, sitting there. Thank you, Drew. And I would ask that the city council adopt a resolution approving the FIRE MOU and approve the needed supplemental appropriation. Thank you.
Any questions of Natalie at this point?
Through the mayor, not any questions, but I just want to thank firefighters for everything they do for our community, and I know that times are always difficult, times are always hard, especially when you're looking at the last few years when the city had basically no monies and no budgets. But we do thank you for everything that the firefighters do. With that, I'd like to go and make a motion on this.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Congratulations. You guys are back into a contract, so. All right, moving on to item number 13, classification changes to positions within the Information Technology Division. Mr. Devin Barber, our IT manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you, as a recommendation, to authorize the Director of Finance to do three things, add a new classification of senior IT analyst, reclassify the existing IT analyst and IT supervisor positions to the classification of senior IT analyst, and to amend the salary schedule as appropriate for these reclassifications and salary increases. The background on this, the IT division is comprised of five employees, and up until October of last year, when I lost an employee to a promotional opportunity to another agency, we hadn't seen any employee turnover in many, many, many years. Prior to going out for an IT recruitment, staff felt it would be important to look at the staffing and the positions in the division and make sure that we're positioned for both today and the future needs of the city. They reached out and hired Bryce Consulting as a consultant to do that study. The consultant interviewed staff members and looked at the data in context of the IT functions. They also completed a compensation survey of our relevant cities and our segment, if you will. The report is part of your council packet this evening, but their significant findings were that the size of the existing IT staff is similar to that of other organizations in our market. The IT position of IT supervisor and IT analyst currently are working at the same level in different functions within the IT operations, and their most appropriate classification would be a new advanced journeyman level position, which is that senior IT analyst position. The IT technicians are working in the appropriate, or positions appropriate for the duties that they are performing, and that the IT technician's salary needs to be adjusted by 7.75%. Couple of things, while Bryce was out finding this out, they also wrote a job description for the senior IT analyst, and what they found was that that position typically out in the market is an exempt position. And so, as proposed before you, is the IT senior analyst being an exempt position as such, they would be, in lieu of overtime, they would get an 80-hour admin compensation. So, and the other thing was is that this is more of staff level, since the increase for the IT analyst to the senior IT analyst is quite large, or large enough to warrant, maybe breaking that up into two chunks. The recommendation from staff is that the first increment be a 10% bump, and the second one be the remaining amount as the new fiscal year begins in July. And with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
And Devin, before we open this up to the public, your staff, it's a staff of five in IT, but you were augmented by onsite staff at the police department and the fire department previously. Am I correct? In some, to some degree.
Correct. We had a sergeant, a longstanding sergeant at the police department that had been there for, well, since he'd been a reserve, actually, and over the years, he had assumed more and more administrative functions for the CAD RMS system the police department depends upon. He retired three years ago, and we've added that burden to the existing workload that we had. We recently lost our battalion chief to a promotional opportunity. He's now an assistant chief up north. He was a longtime Spillman CAD support person for us as well, so we're trying to, as everyone else in the department and in the city for that matter, we're trying to do more with less to get the work done.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we have a speaker? I'm sorry.
Afterward.
Okay. Pat Miller would like to speak on this item.
Yes, first I have a question, what the total cost is for these positions, including benefits. I know I have the salary increases, but it doesn't list the benefits, so that's a big issue. And then, a couple of comments. It seems as though the city salaries have increased, and we just came off of furloughs and budget, holding the budget, and came off of furloughs, but yet we continually reevaluate positions and increase the salaries. And, you know, we certainly, the taxpayers' organization certainly wants the employees of the city to have a fair salary, but we also are concerned about the CalPERS, the pension debt. The city of Yuba City owes over $49 million to CalPERS and a pension debt, and we feel that you probably need to really look at these positions and hold the line until we can get that debt paid down. The other thing on this particular one is that one of the reclassification includes 17% salary boost, and that is extremely questionable. You know, I'll take the job, give me 17%. And some of you young folks out there, you might want to shadow in information technology because they are paid very well. So, if you could answer the question on including the benefits, appreciate it.
We'll get those in as they're gathering that information up. The city of Yuba City has taken a position where we try to stay in a competitive salary range, and that range is to the negative of 5% of median and rarely ever see the 5%. The other swing side of that, and that's 5% above median. If we can achieve and get to the 5% below, that leaves us in a competitive market in which to recruit individuals into the various positions that are required to be filled with a high-caliber person. As we went into the recession, the city of Yuba City had about 325 employees currently, and I have to take my shoes off to count to this, but we're at about 294. We've leaned the personnel down, in fact, so lean at one point that we seriously didn't have enough police officers out there to do all of the functions that the police department is tasked with, and that would be, we cut some of the things like traffic and some of the other components out of the police department. But that's also fallen across all of the employee groups. So, I do know that the IT unit, as it is, with the loss of the sergeant and the battalion chief, are tasked with a much greater responsibility, keeping this system up and viable, to build around police services, the fire service, dispatching, everything else that goes on, plus keeping the citizens informed and all of the other components that go through our IT division, to include getting police cars onsite in an efficient manner through our GIS mapping systems and everything else that go on. They have quite a task out in front of them. So, I think to answer some of those, it was the total cost with benefits was the primary one.
Right, that's correct. The staff report does indicate that the total there includes both salary and benefits. It doesn't give the breakdown between the portion of salary versus the portion of benefits, but that cost was all-inclusive, including all the benefits, including PERS.
Thank you.
To the mayor. And also, Devin, didn't we also have another technician who left recently? So, we're actually down one position, too?
Well, we're down one IT technician who left to go for the promotional opportunity, and so that's the full-time staff member I'm currently missing.
Right. So, we're down people also, so this still, if you look at the real numbers, we're probably still less than what we were with that individual here.
Yes.
And I might add, it was important for me, as the department had to try to get this before council and seek your approval, because the market does indicate we need salary adjustments, and as Pat indicated, it is pretty significant, particularly for one individual. But that said, I want to make sure that we can attract and hire the most qualified candidates, which is hard to do when we're significantly below market, in addition to the 5% that we plan to stay below market. So, I'd like to get a recruitment started for these as well, but want to advertise it at the highest market rate possible. at the highest market rate possible for, given our demographics.
Okay. Pat, looks like you have some more questions?
Yeah, in reading the staff report, it lists proposed title, current salary for the IT supervisor, $83,761, and the proposed salary is $89,220, which does not include the benefits, the CalPERS. Senior, there's another IT analyst that is getting, currently getting $76,148, and will be getting $89,220, and that's the one with the 17% increase. And there are two tech twos that will make 60, currently make $63,606, and will be making $68,532, 7.75% increase. So youngsters, listen to those salaries and go to school, go to school.
Mr. Mayor, not to belabor it, you know, I'd like to thank Devin for doing the presentation tonight, but just to clarify, the city manager's office is usually the office that says no when people come down and ask for things when it comes to financial matters. You've got an average tenure in your IT department, ranges anywhere between 15 and 25 years. And Mr. Barber, maybe you've been here longer than 25?
Working on 28.
28, okay, so 15 to 28 years, those are the four people that were referenced. High-quality individuals, work very hard for the city, I couldn't agree with Pat Miller more. Do go and get an IT job, because these jobs are, from a supply and demand standpoint, high in demand, we do need to compensate them well to keep them here and recognize the good work that they do. So this analysis, you'll see that the report was done under the oversight of the city manager's office, and of course, it wouldn't be before you tonight if it didn't have 100% support of that office as well. Thank you.
And I just want to make one comment, being a prior full-time employee of the city, not a full-time employee of the city as an elected person, but I know Devin's staff is, in the past and currently, as need to upgrade systems and things like that occur, this is not a staff that takes that job lightly and shuts the city down for a day. They come in in the middle of the night when there is no one except for the cleaning crews at City Hall, and they start upgrading systems, and they try to make it with as least amount of impact, and that includes both police and fire. Any of those upgrades and making sure that communication is always being carried through, you know, from our fire engines to our police cars, back into our dispatch centers. Here at City Hall, the flow of information continues even during upgrade systems, and that's, that's just the excellent staff that we have that does that, and again, they go out of the way to make sure that that happens for us.
To the mayor. Go ahead. Just a point of clarification, that means I think Devin started when he was 12 years old with the city, but anyhow, I would like to recommend that we approve this item, both A and B, and vote on this.
I'll open it for discussion after.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just did some simple math, using the numbers on the front under fiscal impact, and the second page are summary of re-recommended position changes on the 17% increase, and the increase in benefit package, when you do the math, is $4,502 a year, by just taking the numbers that are on here and extrapolating. So, simple math right there.
Some math is hard at it tonight, you know? This is why you sit right-
The numbers are important.
This is why he sits right here and scribbles this stuff down in front of me, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, Devin. And Robin gets to stay behind, because we're moving on to item number 14, the financial report for six months ended December 31st, 2015. Robin Bertagni, Finance Director.
Good evening. Tonight I'm going to be providing you with a fiscal update for the fiscal year 1516, the first six months through December 31st, 2015. It's a fairly brief report, because we're very early on in the fiscal year. This is a summary of the general fund budget versus actual at the highest level, including the beginning fund balance as of July 1st, 2015, the total revenues, total expenditures, and fund balance on a budget basis, and the actual results from operations for the first six months. The fund balance amount included here includes only the uncommitted healthy city's reserve, not the city's economic stabilization reserve fund. The year-to-date amounts are on a cash basis and represent amounts received for revenue and expended for expenses as of December 31st, it doesn't include any accrual information. The original 1516 budgeted expenses were $37.4 million. To that, we have added grant-funded appropriations of $852,000, so a significant amount of grants that we've received through December 31st. Prior-year expenditure additions for purchase order commitments of $370,000, and negotiated contract increases in costs for $709,000 total to totally eliminate the furloughs and do all the things that we did with employee contract agreements. Total currently budgeted expenditures are just under $39.4 million. Since revenues are on a cash basis and our largest revenues are not received until February of each fiscal year, February and May, the general fund has a deficit as of December 31st. That shouldn't alarm you, because that's fairly typical. It merely represents a cash flow issue, and the city is prepared to cover it each year with our pooled cash reserves. We will once again have a positive fund balance in the general fund by the end of the fiscal This slide shows you the top four revenues of the city's general fund, with the gold amounts being the percentage of budget received, and the lighter blue amounts being the percentage of budget not yet received. Shows you that we have received nothing in property tax revenues, which is once again typical. We don't receive the first payment from Sutter County until February, with the second installment being in May. By the end of the fiscal year, though, finance projects that property tax revenues will be approximately $150,000 higher than what we have budgeted, because we budgeted for an increase of 4%, and our assessed values have gone up 6.3% between fiscal years. And the details of the changes in the assessed values were included in the written staff report provided to city council, the breakdown between residential versus industrial, commercial, This is the quarterly changes in sales tax on both a cash basis and an adjusted basis. I know I show this to council at least twice a year, every year, because our sales taxes are number one revenue source for the city, and as such, we rely on it pretty heavily. You can see from looking at these percentage changes, it is fairly volatile from quarter to quarter compared to the same quarter of the previous fiscal year. It changes significantly, but the good news, most of these quarters that I'm showing you up here are positive. That wasn't always the case during the recession. The adjusted basis, for the students that are here, the cash basis represents the amounts that we receive in cash, the adjusted basis are based upon percentages provided to us by our sales tax audit consultant to factor in any double payments, overpayments, or missed payments by our businesses in our community. Four more of our top general fund revenues, again, showing how much we've received as a percentage of what has been budgeted. The Motel surcharge revenues received exceed the 25% expected. I would only expect to have received 25% through December 31st, because we don't receive the December 31st quarter until the end of January. Building permit revenues are about 78% of what we budgeted, significantly higher due to the increase in development activity, and I included in the written staff report to council that about a third of those revenues are due to solar construction within the In summary, as it relates to our revenues, finance fully expects that by the end of the fiscal year, all of our revenues will be right on track with where we projected. I'm not seeing any major trends one way or the other, where something's going to be significantly higher or significantly less than what we've budgeted. On the expenditure side, we've expended 46.6% of the amounts budgeted for salaries and benefits. The savings is below the 50% that we would expect due to vacancies that Human Resources is in the process of recruiting for. I was curious to see how the percentage compared to last fiscal year, so I looked at December 31st of last year, and last year we had expended 46.8, so 0.2% more than what we've expended this year as a percentage of our budget. And to me, that's an indication that at the end of the fiscal year, we will likely once again have a surplus, even though we started with a budget deficit, but I want to caution that that's one-time money, solely because we have vacant positions that we've budgeted that we're in the process of trying to fill. It's not money that we can use for ongoing expenses on a go-forward basis. 41% of the amount budgeted for operating expenses has been expended as of December 31st, and the total general fund expenditures are 44.7% of the amounts budgeted. Finance will receive each department's estimated total expenditures as part of their budget submission process for next year's budget, and at that point, I will tally up everything and give you a projected year-end savings figure, once all of the budget submissions are done towards the end of April, mid-April, end of April timeframe. We'll have a better idea of how we anticipate ending the fiscal year. This is a slide that shows you the city's unfunded PERS liabilities. It shows the assets within both our safety and our miscellaneous plans, the liabilities that we owe according to CalPERS, and this is as of the June 30th, 2014 actuarial report that we received in November and December of 2015, showing that we have a net unfunded liability of $21.5 million on safety plans, $25.8 million for miscellaneous. When you add to that the $2.2 million that we still owed as of June 30th on our pension obligation bonds, that was the $49.4 million that Pat referred to earlier. From our CalPERS actuarial reports, I wanted to include this slide too, just so that everyone's aware that we are fully informed and knowledgeable that we do have this outstanding obligation. We monitor how much it is and look at it. We're not in a position to throw a bunch of money at it at this time to try to reduce it, but we're fully aware that we have this obligation to CalPERS. And with that, I'd like to move on to our two enterprise funds, the water utility and the wastewater utility. The water operating revenues are at 45.6% of budget. The reason they're close to the 50%, halfway through the fiscal year is because of the seasonal nature of water billings in July, August, and September, when the consumption is in fact higher. In comparing this to what the projections were, it showed a decline of 19% by comparing the first six months of fiscal year 1516 to two years ago, where we projected we would be for 1516 to where we were two years ago, and we measure it to two years ago, because that's the state's measurement that they ask us to look at, and this is attributable to the state, to the city's conservation efforts to reach the state-mandated goals. Capital connection fee revenues are only at 9% of the amount budgeted. As I indicated in my written report, the percentage received is much lower than expected due to the 1.6 million that we have budgeted in Prop 84 waterline grant revenue connection fees that we anticipate being received prior to the end of the fiscal year. Operating expenditures are at 43% of the amount budgeted, and are also less than budget expectations at this time during the fiscal year. In reviewing where the savings is occurring, it's in salaries and benefits, because we had 3.5 vacant positions that are in the process of being filled. Heat and power have cost us less than what we've budgeted and expected, and equipment, operations, and maintenance were also less than expected through December 31st. Water purchases, however, exceeded expectations, with 71% of the amount budgeted already expended. Debt service to date only includes the December 1st interest payment. Principal and interest are not due until June 1st, so that's why it looks slightly skewed on the debt service. We have some similar data on the wastewater. Revenues are at 48% of the amount budgeted, only slightly less. We don't have the seasonal fluctuations in wastewater as we do on the water side. Grant revenues are from the receipt of SRF grant funds. Capital connection fee revenues for the wastewater are at 46% of the amount budgeted, approximately half of what we would expect this point through the fiscal year, because we don't have a large grant revenue receivable outstanding. Operating expenditures are at 37% of the amount budgeted, and are therefore less than what we would expect. I looked to see where those differences came from and why they were less. We had 7.5 vacant positions within the wastewater utility function, had savings in heat and power, and facilities and operations and maintenance is under budget as well. This is our debt coverage calculation in order to meet our bond covenants, where I measure our available cash balance at a certain point in time, including the receivable from the Prop 84 waterline connection that we're anticipating receiving. We've got the grant agreement in place, it's just a matter of cash flow timing, to the annual debt service from the connection fees that we pay from connection fee debt service revenues. And the ratio is measured in terms of years. So on the water side, we have just a little over a year of debt service set aside, cash available, and on the wastewater side, just under two years. So the water side shows that we have to be more concerned about running out of money sooner, and when we do, we track everything separately within the city's accounting system, we will keep track of it, and it'll run deficit, and we'll continue to pay our debt service until such time as development increases, and we use a pooled cash function for each of the systems. So the cash from operations and capital projects that we have set aside to build projects with will help keep the enterprise system whole as an entire system, even if the cash drops deficit for the particular connection fee fund. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions of Robin?
There's really no question, but just kind of an observance, you said there were, what, 7.5 positions on the wastewater that were vacant, correct?
That's correct.
Just recently, I think we have set it up to where an outside firm will be filling two of those positions for a year, is that not correct? Where we voted on that, from an outside firm to help us out?
You're correct. At the most recent meeting, you did take that action. Additionally, I believe we have one individual tech who's going to be coming back to the city. So, so one position, the good news of the two that were vacant, one will be filled, but you're correct, will supplement with those consulting services.
With the education that's needed now for wastewater systems and things, and the licenses, that is a definitely a bit of a smelly career, but it is a solid one that somebody needs to be looking at for the future, is something like that, because it is, it is an open career right now throughout the state of California. It's hard to find people for that. Thank you.
Robin, thank you very much for the presentation, certainly keeps the council and the citizens informed as to where we stand as a city and financially where we stand. So thank you once again.
You're welcome.
And we will note and follow your report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 15, presentation of the investment report, quarter ended December 31st, 2015. Mr. Spencer Morrison, he's our city, elected city treasurer, he's still trying to figure out how that happened.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight I bring before you the treasurer's quarterly investment report for the quarter ending December 31st, 2015. And the portfolio value, the portfolio had a market value of 111 million, 111.7 million, 76.8 of that was in city held funds, the remainder were in trustee held funds, which are mostly made up of district bonds. That was a $20.9 million increase from last quarter, and the majority of the transactions were due to Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency activity. About 40 million was received in reimbursements, and about 38 million went out in invoices There was a tax allocation bond refunding from the- Tax, there was a tax allocation bond refunding from the former redevelopment agency district. And that made up about thirty-four point six million of the funds in that the transaction was happening in the last month of the quarter. And so the check, the bank account balances showed the transactions coming in and out. And it's just a temporary thing for us. It'll be, that amount will be already dispersed and gone for the next presentation. Overall, there were seventeen investments matured and seventeen purchased. The average yield of the investments that matured or were sold was point eight four percent. And the average yield purchased was one point one six. So we're starting to see that continuing little trend that was going the other way when I took this office. City held composition is in this pie chart in front of you. Twenty-five percent of the pie chart is in agency bonds such as Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, which are asset-backed securities. U.S. Treasury bonds, thirteen percent. Municipal and state bonds, about seven percent. Corporate bonds, about eighteen percent, and CDs, about six percent. Overall, right around sixty-nine percent of the portfolio is in bonds. And the remainder is in very liquid cash-like investments such as the local agency investment fund, which is a state savings account for the cities. And that's about fifteen percent of the portfolio. And the remainder is in cash, money markets, and cash-like investments. This chart shows a two-year graph illustrating how our average maturity strategy has changed in anticipation of the fixed income market conditions. And I've got two years in here. And the rise, the rising years in the average maturity of the investments that we're holding, that was as we were watching the, watching the investment yield rates drop or be just unstable and very, very low. And so what we were doing, what the city was doing in this part of the investing during these periods was to invest in longer maturity to try to get more yield and try to retain more of the value of the investment for longer. And then, as you can see, as we move out into more current times in this area, there is a little more anticipation of change. The market doesn't, isn't quite sure if the, if the interest rates are going to be bumped up by the Fed more than they already have been recently. And so the, most of the fixed income market is holding shorter and getting ready, trying to make sure that the funds are available to move into higher yielding investments if that opportunity arises. There was an uptick in the target federal funds rate for the first time in seven years. And that has the markets waiting for the Fed's next move, leading most fixed income investors to keep portfolios in intermediate maturity instruments that will slightly outperform treasury bonds. With that, I'll entertain any questions, and this is simply a note and file item.
Any questions of Spencer? I only have one question. Who did you follow into this position? Who was your predecessor?
That would be the city manager, Steve Krager.
And did I hear you say that it was on a decline when you took, those investments were on a decline when you took our?
Yes, the market, which the small city treasurer.
That was a yes or no. And guess who's following you? It's a dyson.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night. We'll note and follow your report. Moving on to item number seventeen, provision of police services to the Walton area, presented by our city manager and your boss, Mr. Spencer Morrison, Steve Krager.
So just for the record, Mr. Mayor, those past treasurers report our public record. So anyone who wants to go back and compare the numbers from then to the numbers of now, although Treasurer Morrison did point out that markets act as they do. Fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago, actually, when I first took the job of treasurer, rates were actually about five, five to six percent. And we had a city budget, where's Robin, that I think had an interest earnings in the general fund somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Just remarkable and changing times. And the good news is, we don't, we didn't rely upon that money as part of our structure. Otherwise, it wouldn't have done us well. So that aside, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm here to speak to you this evening regarding the provision of police services to the area commonly known as the Walton area. And what I'd like to do is provide a little background for the benefit of the public to give an idea of how we came to where we are today. First, to clarify, providing police services to all residents within the city limits has been a stated priority of the council for many years. The city and the county entered into a master tax exchange agreement in the year two thousand. And you see a map before you that gives a boundary. And what this larger box, it looks like a box, kind of the larger yellow area, twenty-five square miles. Now, this is the sphere of influence of the city of Yuba City. It's not our current boundary, it's the ultimate growth boundary for the city. And the city and the county entered into an agreement that said, the city will be allowed to grow under certain conditions. One of those conditions was that the city would allow the county to keep sales taxes in areas of annexation. And the county would provide sheriff services. And so that was the trade-off. There would be certain thresholds that would be reached of homes that would be annexed, and then that would change, that the city would start to provide police services. The black line is Franklin Road. The area to the north of the blank black line is the northern area, and the south is the southern area. The area to the north reached the threshold of ninety percent of the homes being annexed within the city. That is the orange area, Tierra Buena. And that reached the threshold in two thousand and eight, and we've been providing police services since about that time. The area to the south of Franklin Road is, just, you know, let me get the pointer. I think that's more helpful when you see the large map. So this was annexed into the city, and there were other annexations since two thousand. This did not reach the eighty-two percent threshold. So the area to the north had a ninety percent threshold of annexed homes within the larger area. This area down here, so if you were to draw a boundary right here, once eighty-two percent of the homes within this boundary were annexed, it would trigger police services. This wasn't enough to trigger it. In the early two thousands, an effort was made to look at annexing this area so that the threshold would be reached and the trigger would move to police services. That did not go through. So where we are today. So here we have the area in question. This is that Walton area that's listed here. This has become commonly known within the police department as beat six. So if and when this area is annexed into the city, it would trigger beat six to be covered and no longer be covered by the sheriff services but by city services. So in order to understand how the community feels, we started some outreach among the city staff and other individuals to start conversations with community leaders to sense the reception to this. The reception's been positive, otherwise I wouldn't be here before you today to talk about next steps. So the master tax exchange agreement provides a process for the orderly transition of services from the sheriff to the police. It provides for about a one-year, chief, is it about a one-year term for transition? That said, our police chief and the sheriff have an excellent working relationship. So there's that understanding, especially as we work with the county, that that's a governor of time, but that we would be afforded the time to be able to transition the services well if and when annexation occurs. As part of that, although we don't have, I don't have all the details for you today, we've done rough estimations. And as I mentioned, there's a sales tax transfer. So that transfer, the city would be no longer obliged to keep the county whole within the sales tax in the area. The savings to the county is they no longer need to provide the sheriff services. The out-of-pocket annual cost to the city, it was estimated to be about three hundred thousand dollars a year. So officers would be added, sales tax would come in as a result. Property tax would also transfer as it always does as part of annexations. But then that effect to the city would be approximated at about three hundred thousand dollars a year. That is, that, you're working off of a thirty-six, thirty-seven million dollar general fund budget. So when you're talking about a one percent impact, it's manageable, it's doable, especially given the fact this has been the top priority of the city council for many, many years thus far. So just another point of clarification. We already provide, as you, council knows, fire services and water services within this area. So this, as I refer to this area, is the south Yuba City area that remains in the county that is considered for annexation. The one services that is provided, that would be provided aside from police would be road maintenance services. You know, in terms of the next steps, there are certain steps that need to be taken. But most importantly, what the purpose of this evening's presentation is, is just an introduction of the concept to begin the conversation. So should the council say, go forward with this? And we would, but we'd begin a community conversation with folks and talk and plan up, pardon me, plan a number of community meetings, most likely in people's homes in the affected area. Just providing that open forum for communication. As part of that, we'd prepare written literature, we'd gather questions and provide responses. You know, probably most importantly, and I apologize for not, for really failing to mention it, aside from the chief's coordination with the sheriff, our conversations with county staff have been ongoing as well. I met with the county administrative officer last Wednesday, and we talked about this very issue, so he's aware of it. As part of that, it would include us going forward and talking to the county board of supervisors about their support of this issue as well. It's been mentioned by the county in the past that this annexation, in terms of their priorities, is of great importance to them. So your council's priorities are aligned with the board's priorities as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Krager?
Through the mayor.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Krager. The tax exchange agreement, is it based upon a percentage of the city's sales taxes collected? Or is it just the sales taxes collected in that particular area?
So it's a good question. There are two different facets of the sales tax sharing agreement. One is that when this area, by the way, I think I, okay, that's it. When this larger area wasn't part of the city and it was part of the county, there was approximately eight hundred thousand dollars worth of sales tax that was produced within that area. County, county received all of that money. So we did simple math back in the day and said, okay. And actually, just so you know, if you go back and look at the original line, the original line was Highway twenty. In two thousand and eight, the line was moved down here through mutual agreement of the city and county. Another matter, but that's where it was. So we said the area will count, this is four hundred thousand dollars of value, and this is four hundred thousand dollars of value. So when we took over police services to the north area, that hold harmless amount that we had to pay to the county every year got cut in half. So effectively went from eight hundred thousand down to four hundred thousand, a little less than that, frankly. The other provision is we agreed that any new, any new sales tax producers that go in in these areas that we annex, that we would pay them, currently, we pay them ten percent. It was a larger amount, and it's graduated over time. So we paid to the county ten percent of any sales tax produced. Case in point, Walmart went in. When Walmart went in, and let's say they produce, let's just make up a number, a million dollars, we would cut to the county a number of one hundred thousand dollars a year to them. And that's ongoing forevermore. So that's a perk to the county as much as that sales tax transfers. They will have an ongoing funding source from the city. And I'd just, I'd ask Robin if she could, I know you just cut a check to the county, and what was that amount for? Okay, so four hundred and twenty thousand dollars we paid to the county.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Steve, just for a point of clarification, two questions. Number one is when you're talking about beat six, you're talking about three police officers for three shifts, morning, afternoon, and night. And then you're talking about dispatchers, a total of staff of five people?
I think it's more like seven. Chief, I think we have five covering a beat? Oh, come forth, please. Thank you.
And my next question was, obviously, was the total amount of employees. And then the cost was, I think last time we looked, that was about a million two?
Initial one-time cost and seven hundred and seventy thousand approximately ongoing. So there was five officers, one CSO, and one dispatcher.
And then was our goal, Steve, to put this, or try to put this within our next budget, possibly? I mean, obviously, we've got some outreach that you're working on with the public. And I would think most of the people that are patrolled by the sheriff's department would definitely want to have patrols by the police department. Because if you've got, you know, city fire there, you might as well have city policer as well. So our goal would be possibly, if everything goes favorable, try to see if we can budget this in the next budget cycle?
So we, your council put one-time money aside as part of the last budget session. This was listed as one of those items, it was a priority issue. So we have set aside money for the one-time piece of it. We would look through, working through the budget cycle, to have a placeholder in there. With regard to timing of the actual annexation, it'll matter how this evolves, meaning that community conversation that we have. I think the best-case scenario that we would have would be somewhere in the August, September timeframe, should everything go. When I say that, it sounds like a long time, but a lot of it, it's legal timeframes, noticing timeframes. Part of that local agency formation commission process as months of time that's scheduled in the statutes.
Right. And the only reason to say that, is that enough time for the chief to bring on seven people, hire, you know, five additional police officers?
So we, it's not. We would not expect, what we would put into that agreement, working cooperatively with the county, is a timeframe for transition. So we might actually, when I say August, September, that would be where the, it could be approved. As far as the trigger date, when services would transition, we want to work on that date. I know I'm speaking for the chief, he can add clarity if he'd like, but we have talked about the importance of that.
Yeah, I would just echo this sooner than later. I mean, it's definitely something that I've, many of us here are pushed and definitely want to get this done. And I know you're doing everything you can to recruit additional police officers because that's where the savings in our budget have come from of not filling the positions there. So it's not lack of not trying, but, so, I mean, that's the only thing I'd say. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Mr. Krager, thank you very much for the informational item. And we'll move on to business from the city council. This is number eighteen. City Council reports, Councilmember Preet Dibbal.
Always do that. The regional housing authority meeting, it was actually a very short meeting. Mainly a closed session for the most part, so not much discussion otherwise. We also had the Yuba City Unified School District meeting, which, as we gave the city update, one of the questions that Steve went ahead and clarified were how many of our parks are converted from city surface water to onsite well water? And so the response back for that one was Gap, North Gate, Happy, Hillcrash Regency, Blackburn Tally, and Sambran. The smaller parks were not converted due to the cost efficiency, just to keep the maintenance, the sediment that settles in. And the reason that question came up was with the concerns with the school. And if they are interested in irrigating, if the schools are irrigated through surface water, and if they have any interest to change that over to onsite well water, city staff would be available for consultation. Other than that, we didn't, I didn't have any other meetings. We did have the anti-bowling forum that was held on February third. That was a great event that got pulled together. We seated, we had two hundred and seventy chairs out. Every chair was full, and on top of that, standing room all the way through into the auditorium back area. It was a phenomenal event, lots of. It was a phenomenal event, lots of, of the kids as well as the parents. The FBI agent actually came up to me afterwards and said it was the largest group he has actually presented to, particularly parents. Usually, he'll do these anti-bowling events at the school, so he usually gets all the kids there for the assembly. But because it was an evening event, he said that was the largest group of parents he's seen in one big room like that. So kudos to our community who is looking for efforts to really step up and do something for anti-bowling. I've already gotten eight requests to bring that forum back, so you will see it again. And I hope most of you will attend and spread the word. Other than that, didn't have anything else.
Thank you very much. Moving on to, we're from Councilmember John Dukes.
Have two items. We had the Sutter Butts Flood Control Meeting last Wednesday, working on getting things started for this year's construction season and continuing on with our five-year strategic plan, dealing with property issues. And so just moving forward with this, and it's, we're looking forward to wrapping things up this year with our major construction project, but we still have additional things that we're looking at doing in the region and the regional flood control project that will incorporate, incorporate the whole region. And in addition, had a meeting with the Mosquito Vector Board. Just wanted to report on Zika virus, which many of you have heard about in the news. We do have a local case in Woodland that was reported, I believe around the first of the month. It's nothing to be concerned about. It was not transmitted by mosquitoes in this area. The mosquitoes that transmit this particular virus, the closest ones are probably down near the Fresno area and in the Bay Area. That particular species of mosquito has not been found in our region, and we're hoping that it will not make its way here. This is something that can be contracted through foreign travel, and the case from Woodland was someone who had traveled to the Caribbean. And so the areas of the world that are on alert right now are the Caribbean, down in Brazil, and Chile. So if you're planning on traveling there, you might want to check into those travel alerts to, to make yourself safe. So this is, we're keeping track of it, but right now, there's no concern for the public here locally. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. And moving on to Councilmember Cash Gill.
Yep. We did have the monthly meeting for the Sutter Butts Flood Control Agency. We did receive some grant monies to work on some eco-restoration work by the After Bay, and also begin to do some work by the Gridley Bridge. And in addition to that, some of the equipment stuff is on track. We still continue to work with the Indian tribes on a lot of cultural issues. There are some sections of the levee that will continue to be fixed this year right by Second Street. That's going to be a big fix. And in addition to that, we did receive some funds to fix south of town by Laurel Avenue by the Dingville area, so that'll be tied up. Myself as the chairman of the committee, along with Mike Anamini and our attorney, I will be traveling to Washington, DC on February 29th, so I will not be here at the next council meeting. So Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I'll be back in Washington, DC and get back about 11:30 at night in Sacramento. So a lot of meetings with hot top officials, trying to move this project further along and see if we cannot get this thing wrapped up by the end of this year. The maintenance stuff will still continue to go on. And like we mentioned at the last meeting, we did pass our five-year strategic plan to make sure that the maintenance of the levees still continue to go on as it will. In addition to that, our executive director, Mike Anamini, and I just got the email a little while ago, was named by the American Society of Civil Engineers Region Nine, outstanding civil engineer in the public sector. And Region Nine encompasses the entire state of California. So that's a great, great honor to have for, for Mike. In addition to that, kudos to Brad McIntyre. I see that there are around the parks, some additional bags out with some additional dog signage saying, pick up after your dog, because we see that too much in the parks. The kids are trying to play, and there's dog poop all over the place. So kudos to that. And in addition to that, I guess Brad is the only one out of the executive team. I guess that brought us Valentine's Day candies. I don't know what happened to the rest of you guys, but kudos to Brad. Yeah, thank you, Brad, for bringing them out. Late Valentine's Day candies, cookies is just as good, too, so just for the rest of the executive team.
Pardon? Discounted.
Discounted. It's the thought that counts. So with that, that's all I've got. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our vice mayor, Mr. Dan Cleveland.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Sacramento Valley Division League of California Cities Board Meeting. That's the, from basically where our county up to the Oregon border, straight up the Mill Valley, and then over to the Nevada border, where they do advocate for specific issues regarding our cities. And you can tell it's mostly rural cities that we're dealing with. We had a board meeting for making plans for the events we're going to be doing this year. Wednesday, the 10th, was a gilcizer, which is that ditch that kind of goes through Yuba City that fills up with water whenever it rains. And it has flood issues, it has conveyance. We try to keep it in good shape to make sure the water moves out of the city in a, a good manner. The chairman-elect was Dan Flores. I was voted vice chair, and we do a rotation, county, city, county, city. And that's kind of how I got pushed into that. Sometimes it was a little game-playing and, you know, messing with each other. You guys know how it is out, you mess with your friends. Sometimes, you're not there, you get voted in. That's what we did to Dan Flores. And then yesterday, I had the opportunity to present to the Sons of the Golden West this current project report that we have for the council members to, bullet points and pretty little pictures so people can see the projects we're doing, the road projects and many different things in the community, and our goals, and let people know what's happening. So I was able to present to that last night. Other than that, I am, that's it.
Perfect. I think some kids think that, that it has reached their-
Yeah, their limit.
Their bedtime, but I promise we're going to end this really, really quick. We did have a workshop just a week ago on water, wastewater. That is coming back to the council for the next step of the process on March the 1st. Also attended the Sacramento Area Council on Government Meeting, the government relations and personnel, and learned some of the updates on, on the state budget, certainly that'll have impact on transportation. The governor's calling for a $3.6 billion package. There's some modification to current, the current Beal package that's out there, trying to, to come up with, with funding revenue sources. But the biggest impact to Yuba City and other jurisdictions will be the lowering of the gas tax swap. They're going to decrease, or they're proposing to decrease, local funding for that. And about 40% of the cap and trade funds are at the discretion of the, the governor as he moves the, this project forward. And much of that will probably be moved towards some Caltrans projects, and some of that will be also in an effort to streamline some of the SEQA processes. So trying to make some of those projects exempt from, from that process. So there's some good news and some bad news in, in everything that we do when we deal with, with trying to, to obtain funding to build to do what we need here locally. And, and some of that does include the quality of our roadways. I apologize to the, to the high school students, and all of you are all from River Valley High School, I assume. You guys deserve all extra credit, credit. Any, any meeting that goes beyond an hour and 15 minutes, I think you get double credit for. Just mention that to-
Long one.
Mention that to your instructors.
Through, through the mayor, through the mayor. Just one addition to that, I just want to welcome one of our Exchange Japan students who is here with Drew. She is visiting, how long is she visiting for? For the whole school year, so, okay. So she's here under, studying government, so.
From, from multiple nations and different programs. There's so many different programs. There's like three this service, our high schools in the immediate area. It's, it's highly recommended. I know, I had three academic year students, and I have visited all of them in, at their, at their homes over a course of time. With that, we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting, and if there's going to be a rush of students for signatures, we'll take care of that now.